A regular meeting for December 2, 2024. And we're going to start off this evening with a public hearing for Central Connecticut's Solid Waste Authority, CCSWA. So the Town of Enfield's legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Enfield shall hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, December 2, 2024, at 6:55 PM to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinion regarding the proposed 2024 CCSWA Enabling Ordinance. Information regarding the proposed modifications may be found at www.nfield/Connecticut.gov, dated this 20th day of November, 2024, by Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. I want to announce the ground rules for the public hearing. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone will have the opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, et cetera. Please refrain from personalities. So first, I'd like to call up Donald Nunes to give us just a quick synopsis. Welcome, Donald.
Mayor, Councilors, good evening. Donald Nunes, Director of Public Works. This Enabling Ordinance was adopted 10 years ago. It has everything to do with where we do disposal of trash, not the collection part of it. Again, it's about disposal. It's about future programs such as food scrap, food waste reductions, everything regarding that. And again, it has nothing to do currently with the collection of trash. It's more disposal and future programs to reduce and reuse and recycling and the like.
And do you support the changes?
Yes.
You do? Okay, thank you. So to be clear, this is not about the disposal issue or collection issue at all. This is about where the trash ends up once it's collected. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please raise their hand and I'll call them up. Sir in the back. Bless you.
Ken Boulet, Rainard Road, taxpayer, lifelong resident, 45-year retired, proud employee. I'm talking more about the collection portion of this, so it's, you know, excuse me, I know it's not what it's all about, but I know it's out there, privatization. So I want to start off with my deep concerns for privatization of our M. Division. Yes, a private company can come in and do it cheaper for the first two years or couple of years. The price skyrockets.
Ken, we have to keep this to the public hearing. As soon as the public's hearing is over, you can come up under public communications, but this really has to address.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Okay. I'll see you in a minute. Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Go on for the second time and the third time. Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Public meeting's closed. And then, please hold. You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Our kid mayor for the Town of Enfield is going to start out this meeting.
So here's your speaker here. And you're going to introduce yourself.
Hi, I am Cooper McIntosh.
Let me hear your son.
Hi, I am Cooper McIntosh, and I am proud to be your kid mayor. I am here to talk to you about a topic that will be discussed tonight, a topic that is important to me.
Okay, you know what? We're going to start the meeting first. Let's do this first. You're going to read right here. You're going to say, "We're going to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer by Jeff Russo."
We're going to open the meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer of Jeff Russo.
Okay, we're going to stand.
Thank you, Mr. Kid Mayor. During the hustle and bustle of December, it is important to pause and take notice of the upcoming holidays. Christmas time is a time of reflection and gratitude. As we prepare for the holidays, let's remember to thank our heavenly Father for the blessings He has bestowed upon us. Let's remember those who celebrate Hanukkah. Let's also remember those within town who are less fortunate and pray for their safety and happiness. May the holiday season bring everyone peace and joy. Amen.
Pledge allegiance. Say it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, you're going to start your speech.
Hello, everybody. I am Cooper McIntosh, and I am proud to be your kid mayor.
Oh, roll call. The mayor. See, that's why he's the mayor and I'm the deputy mayor. Okay, now you're going to ask for roll call.
Roll call.
Counselor Russo.
Here.
Counselor Santinella.
Here.
Counselor Ungayar.
Here.
Counselor Sikala.
Here.
Counselor Crissati is absent. Counselor Hendrickson.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini is absent. Counselor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Nine members are present, two are absent.
Okay, now, we're going to read the fire evacuation. Can you read that?
In the event of a fire or an emergency, there will be two means of exiting the Council Chambers. Exit out the rear doors and walk out a safe distance away from the building, or exit through the side doors and go down the flight of stairs out the doors and walk a safe distance away from the building.
Okay, that's right. Read his. Now, you're going to read that.
Hello, everybody. I am Cooper McIntosh, and I am proud to be your kid mayor. I am here to talk to you about a topic that will be discussed tonight, a topic that is important to me, smoking and vaping. Did you know that 1 in 4 high school students reported using a tobacco product? And also, 80% of the vaping-related illnesses are occurring in people under the age of 35. We need to come together and get the message across that smoking and vaping are dangerous, especially for young people. Adults talk to us about dangers, but young people, students and athletes, need to help spread awareness. Being a student athlete is important to me, and for that, you need healthy lungs and a healthy body. Please help me and our town make healthy decisions moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Very nice. Are they going to play this video?
Alex, are you playing his video? There it is.
Hi, I am Cooper, and I am running for fifth-grade kid governor. My goal is to end smoking and vaping. Young children should be healthy and active, not poisoning their bodies. Smoking and vaping are both unhealthy, but a lot of people believe that vaping is the healthier choice when it is not. Smoking and vaping can have immediate and long-term effects on a young person. Why do you want me as your kid governor? I am a loyal, kind, trustworthy, honest, helpful person. I chose this topic because it is heartbreaking to see someone just smoking or vaping, so I am here to try and solve this problem and make the world a better place.
Do you know how bad smoking and vaping has been getting lately?
I heard of that. Vapes can be made to look like normal objects, highlighters and pens.
Most vapes contain as much nicotine as 50 or more cigarettes.
Yeah, vapes and cigarettes contain nicotine, which is addictive and makes it hard to stop.
And 80% of the vaping-related illnesses are occurring in people under the age of 35.
Did you guys know within the first 10 seconds of your first puff of a vape or cigarette that the toxic chemicals can spread to your brain, heart and other organs?
Hey, do you guys want to hear my three-step plan to try and end smoking and vaping?
Sure.
One, I would like to host a school fundraiser where students can donate to play, and I will also do raffles. In the future, I would like to donate to the American Lung Association for research. Two, I would like to interview people that have knowledge or experience about this subject. Three, I will use money from the fundraising to make signs and posters to spread awareness about smoking and vaping.
That's a good three-step plan. I like that.
I'm here with Mr. Pratt, and he's going to answer some questions about smoking and tobacco use. Have you ever smoked or used tobacco products? If so, how long ago?
I've never smoked, but I have used tobacco in college. One of the guys on the baseball team I played on gave it to us for free, so that's how I started. It was a long time ago.
Was there a specific moment that made you decide to stop?
Yeah, when I got married and started to have children, I decided to be a good role model, so I figured I shouldn't do that, so I stopped at that point.
What advice would you have for someone trying to quit smoking or tobacco use products?
I would say just never start, because once you start, it's not easy to stop. It's very difficult, so don't start.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. In conclusion, I love to play sports and be active. I think it's a great way for kids to be healthy, but smoking and vaping and tobacco products have so many unhealthy effects on children and can cause long-term problems. Please help me spread awareness and be part of the solution. Thank you for your consideration for kid governor. Vote for Cooper.
Vote for Cooper!
Okay, next. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 18, 2024.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any comments, corrections or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? And then approving the regular minutes of November 18, 2024.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Any comments, corrections or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Did you abstain on the other one?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Do you have to make a point of order? I need to abstain from my previous because I wasn't here last time. Sorry.
Thank you, John. Okay, and then tonight, we have special guest Brian Malagrida? Malagrida. With the DEA Resident Agent in Charge. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, while the chief is getting ready and he can give a little introduction, we are very pleased and proud to have with us the Special Agent in Charge of the Drug Enforcement Administration of the U.S. Government for Connecticut here with us. The Enfield Police Department enjoys a strong tradition of collaborating with our federal partners, and as you all know, today of keen interest to all of us is fentanyl, the illegal drugs that are entering into this country and what our government is doing about it. This gentleman is on the front lines. We are so happy that he took time from his busy schedule to join us here. And Chief, with that, I'll turn it over to you for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It is very much my pleasure and my honor to introduce our guests this evening. Brian Malagrida is the Resident Agent in Charge for the Hartford office of the DEA. I haven't known Brian for an excessively long time, but I do very much enjoy hearing the places he's been and then sharing them with you. If this is not a resume that screams, "I know what I'm doing," I'm not sure what does. Brian has been assigned to the DEA offices in Detroit, in Bridgeport, in Washington. He's currently the supervisor in Hartford. He's also had international assignments to both Greece and Bucharest, Romania. So this is someone who clearly is out there on the front lines every day. I am honored and I am grateful that Mr. Bronson and all of you have supported us having an officer in the DEA. I would take you back in time. It's shocking to me to say this, but I came here about seven years ago, and our department was in some degree of flux, and it was deliberate at that point because a new chief was incoming. And there was discussion about what model we wanted to have for a drug enforcement approach within town. We were just a little too small to have a standalone drug unit with a department of roughly 100 people. We were just a little too big to sort of have the patrol officer trying to deal with this hand-to-hand, street-level narcotics-type operations. So of the options that were available, and again, very much with Mr. Bronson's support as well as yours, we made that conscious decision that we wanted the gold standard. We wanted to see if we could get an officer placed in the DEA, and that is the task force arrangement we've operated under for the past seven years. I will let Resident Agent in Charge Malagrida, as part of his presentation, explain to you a little bit more how that works, but I will tell you that we have enjoyed great success. Detective Chamberlain is in the back of the room, and he is our person in that area. He does great work. Narcotics is a global issue. When we have an issue locally, he brings his DEA friends to town. We get the benefit of their training, their resources, their experience, as well as the federal asset forfeiture program that we're able to benefit from, which allows me to take certain expenses that I need covered and cover them off-budget, resulting in obviously a savings to our citizenry. It is very much my pleasure to introduce to you Resident Agent in Charge Brian Malagrida.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. What I'd like to do is explain a little bit about what the DEA is, what we do, what our priorities are currently. Then I'd like to go into currently what we're seeing in New England, some of the New England threats we're seeing, some things we're seeing in Connecticut, some trends we're seeing, how it affects Connecticut. And then, like the chief said, I really want to go in and discuss what the TFO agreement is between the Town of Enfield and the DEA. What does that mean when the Town of Enfield sends a police officer to the DEA, more specifically to my office in Hartford? Okay, right here. Okay, DEA, what's special about the DEA, obviously, we're part of the Department of Justice, we're a federal law enforcement branch of the Department of Justice. We're a single-agency mission, where unlike the FBI, where they investigate many different types of crimes, we typically investigate only one type of crime, drug trafficking, you know, drug manufacturing, drug possession, intent to distribute narcotics. Now, within that realm of just working narcotics, there's obviously some money laundering in there also. There's some violence in there also, but that's typically what we do, with the lead federal agency enforcing narcotics and control substance laws and regulations. Area of responsibility. So for Connecticut, in Connecticut, you have three DEA offices. You have one in Bridgeport, which I was previously in Bridgeport for five years. You have one in New Haven, and we have one in Hartford. Connecticut's an odd, not an odd, it's a different type of state where all our DEA officers are 20 minutes apart from another. So we work very closely, I work very closely with my other two DEA offices in New Haven and Bridgeport. We have offices, we have multiple offices in every state in the country, and we have, as you see, the largest international footprint in law enforcement. We recognize in DEA that drug trafficking, drug manufacturing, drug smuggling is not just a United States problem, it's a worldwide problem. That's why we have such a large footprint outside the United States. We have over 90 different offices outside the United States in different countries. Like the chief previously said, I was stationed in Athens, Greece, for two and a half years, and then I opened up the office in Bucharest, Romania, and was there for three years. So I got to experience how other countries deal with their drug trafficking problem. I think that's why our footprint is so large outside the United States. Majority of our drug trafficking and drug smuggling comes from outside the United States. Our agent priorities, like the chief said, fentanyl is number one right now. I've been with DEA, I'm going on my 23rd year right now, and our priorities have definitely changed in those 23 years. But right now, it's still fentanyl. It's all about fentanyl. The single deadliest drug threat our nature has encountered nationwide, 83,000 opioid overdoses in 2022. I tried to get stats for 2023, they're not out yet. 85% of our opioid-related poisoning deaths in Connecticut involve fentanyl. What we try to do at the DEA, we have a mission focus on going after the Mexican drug cartels. That's where 90% of our manufacturing and trafficking are coming from, is from down south, these two Mexican cartels. We go after the sources, we go after the smuggling methods, and we go after the communication methods. I mean, you have to have all those things in order to get the finished product here in the United States. They have to source it, they have to find a way to get it here, and they have to communicate how they get it here, and that's what we go after. We try to attack all three of those aspects of it. Fentanyl and as well as methamphetamine and cocaine, as you see, I think in the next slide, are New England drug threats. If you told me when I started in law enforcement back in 1994 that methamphetamine would hit New England, I'd say you're crazy, but it has. Number one in New England right now, obviously, is fentanyl. Number two is methamphetamine. It's here. It's not just out west anymore. It is here. Number three were the fake pills, the fentanyl-meth pills. A lot of times, you know, what these drug traffickers and smugglers are doing is they're creating, you think you're getting Oxy, you're thinking you're getting Adderall, and you're actually getting methamphetamine or fentanyl. So you never know what you're getting right now. It's a huge, dangerous threat right now. Cocaine is knocked down a little. Cocaine has always been here. It's just different potent drugs took priority, so cocaine get knocked down a lot. Cocaine is very prevalent here in New England, in the Hartford area. What we're seeing a lot right now is these drug traffickers using the postal service and sending these packages. What we used to see a lot of the ports, especially I saw a lot of ports overseas, and at the border is they would send 10 different shipments at a time, knowingly that we would get maybe captured one or two, maybe three, and seven wouldn't make it. And that's what they're doing with the postal service now. They're sending small packages, you know, three to four kilograms each of heroin or fentanyl or cocaine, send 10 of them to different addresses. Doesn't really matter what address it is, they'll have someone pick it up. If three or four, if we catch on to three or four of them, another five or six make it to their destination. So that's what these traffickers are doing now. In the Hartford area, you know, we're seeing these Dominican and Puerto Rican drug trafficking organizations greatly use the mail service to get packages delivered to this area. I probably, right now, in Hartford, I have probably three or four different open cases involving the U.S. Postal Service, the packages coming into Hartford, Connecticut area. Again, knowing that fentanyl is our number one, unfortunately, what we deal with, we're still dealing with in this area is the overdoses. These are 2022 stats, you know, over 1,400 unattended drug overdose deaths in Connecticut. Definitely, from the increase, look at the increase from 2012 to 2020, to 306% increase. With fentanyl, fentanyl is 100 times more potent than morphine, 50 times more potent than heroin. You don't need a lot. You know, a little bit will kill you. We have this initiative in DEA, one pill can kill. We're trying to get it across. You've probably seen it, we do a little bit of advertising on it. One pill can kill. You don't know what you're taking, and it could be, you know, the one first mistake you make, someone makes. Like I said, 86% of Connecticut overdose deaths were caused by fentanyl. 92% involved opioids, you know, fentanyl, heroin and prescription opium pain relievers. I want to show this slide, not that I want you to know how much you can buy an ounce for, but just the money that goes along with some of these drugs. And that's why people trafficking drugs, because of the money gained from it. You know, let's go, fentanyl, you can get as cheap as $50. You know, you can get a kilogram, which is 2.2 pounds, you can get as cheap as five grand. 2.2 pounds of fentanyl. Remember when I said you only need a little bit, a couple grain salts to kill you, of fentanyl? 2.2 pounds, imagine how many lives that can take. And it's relatively, on that scale, it's relatively pretty cheap. That's why they moved from heroin to fentanyl, because fentanyl's a lot cheaper. And cocaine is obviously, cocaine prices have gone down, it fluctuates. That's around $25,000, $26,000 for a kilogram of cocaine. And yes, we see kilograms of cocaine in Connecticut every day. The task force agreement. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about what does it mean when a Town of Enfield provides a police officer or detective to the DEA? Like I talked about earlier, we have a worldwide footprint. We don't have enough, we're not as big as the FBI, we don't have enough agents. We couldn't survive without the partnerships we glean from our state, local and other federal counterparts. One initiation DEA created a long time ago was a task force officer initiative agreement. What it means, we solicit from different, you know, cities and towns, and we reach an agreement with them, and they send a full-time police officer, you know, usually with drug experience, that has a little bit of work within Narcotics Bureau or Detective Bureau, and they're assigned full-time to my unit, to a DEA task force. In return, what do we do? We deputize that police officer, sorry. So that police officer is the same jurisdiction as I do. So within the Town of Enfield, the Enfield police officers typically have just the jurisdiction of Enfield, Connecticut. Yes, they can dab a little bit outside the borders, but when I federal deputize a officer from Enfield, they have the same jurisdiction, worldwide jurisdiction as I do, as my special agents have. We also pay for any overtime. We pay for any overtime and expenses, as well as any training that we offer, they can go to, that we'll pay for. We also give them all the resources that my current special agents have. So the officer you sent, Jimmy Chamberlain, to me, has all the resources that all my special agents have. What I always say is, we're an extension of the Enfield Narcotics Bureau. You know, when a city or a town gives a police officer to my unit, they just expanded their Narcotics Bureau. At any one time, I can have 10 to 15 to 20 guys in the city of Enfield working whatever the chief needs. We have 271 state and local task forces, 2,200, you know, DEA special agents, plus another 2,500 state and local officers. Again, these factors all combined, we all work on one mission, we have an international footprint, we have the expertise of our locals who know the local area that we're working, the resources of the federal government to become the premier drug investigation agency in the world. Another great aspect of the TFO program is asset forfeiture, asset forfeiture, you know, seizing. And obviously, with drug trafficking, a typical drug trafficker or drug manufacturer doesn't go to the bank, usually with their funds. Some do, some do, will seize bank accounts, they get a lot of that from bank accounts, but a lot of this, they generate tons of cash and tons of assets, and so they have to buy stuff. We're able to seize a lot of these drug proceeds. We have great success in seizing this. After we seize it, after it's all adjudicated, 80% of that goes back into the state and local police departments. 20% goes into the Department of Justice funds, but 80% goes right back into the state and local police officers that work for me. Now, it's not just, we don't just give a blank check to the Town of Enfield, you can spend it the way you want. There's strict guidelines and policies of how they can spend that money. And as the chief will tell you, we track it pretty well, making sure that money is spent Some stuff we've done in a Town of Enfield, a couple years ago, we did a wiretap investigation. It started out as a street-level deal in Enfield. It worked its way all the way up in Texas, Mexico, a Mexican crew out of Mexico. Ended up seizing a kilogram of cocaine and four federal arrests. Currently, right now, this year alone, we did several search warrants in Enfield, but a half kilogram of cocaine, 150 grams of fentanyl. Again, that 150 grams of fentanyl, I can't stress it enough, that it seems like a small amount, but that's a huge amount that could affect the population of Enfield and other communities. Almost a half million dollars seized in assets we seized in Enfield, five firearms, and one stolen firearm was confiscated. These are some of the pictures, you know, I went through a grab from Enfield. Questions? I went through that pretty quick. Really wanted to stress the cooperation that we have with our state and local counterparts. We can't do this alone. Like the chief said, I've, geez, I've been all around the world with DEA. I've had the fortune of seeing how different countries work their, work their drug investigations. We do it very well, but we can't do it alone. We need the cooperation from our local, state and other federal counterparts.
All right, I'll just take the floor back real quickly, if I might. Again, the size of our community is a wonderful thing, but in terms of narcotics enforcement, we're in a bit of a never-never land. I can't stand up. I would need too many people, it wouldn't meet the sweet spot of the swing, so to speak. I can't stand up a standalone narcotics unit for a town this size.
These are some of the pictures, you know, I took that, you know, I went through a grab from Enfield. Questions? I know, I went through that pretty, pretty quick. Really wanted to stress the cooperation that we have with our state and local counterparts. We couldn't, we can't do this alone. Like the chief said, I've, geez, I've been all the way, all around the world with DEA. I've had the fortune of seeing how different countries work their, where, work the drug investigations. We do it very well, but we couldn't, we don't, we can't do it alone. We need the cooperation from our local, state, and other federal counterparts.
All right, I'll just take the floor back real quickly, if I might. Again, the size of our community is a wonderful thing, but in terms of narcotics enforcement, we're in a bit of a never, never land. I can't stand up. I, I would need too many people, it wouldn't meet the sweet spot of the swing, so to speak. I can't stand up a standalone narcotics unit for a town this size. There was a point where the town was part of a regional, local narcotics unit that was very successful. This would have been in the years 15, 16, 17. That dissolved on its own, and we were the last man standing on that. It was successful. The other communities, for other reasons, said, we're going to tap out on that. We can't ignore the problem. I can't expect patrol officers in between calls for service to try to address street level drug transactions that are being, that are occurring, never mind trying to chase them back to countries outside of our jurisdiction. So for seven years now, it has been a great partnership. The presence of a new resident, resident agent in charge struck us as a great opportunity to bring somebody in, to introduce him to you, to let you know the good work that they do, and that this continues to be the most viable platform for us, and derivatively, therefore, for you, to address these problems within our community. Is it going to go away? It's not going to go away. Are we ever going to solve it? We're not ever going to solve it. I would love, and I suspect he would love, to be out of work, but I don't think that's going to happen. I very much value the opportunity to present the special guest for you, and to provide you with at least an overview of education in this area. Any questions or concerns for our guest?
I don't really have any questions, but, you know, my, being in my law enforcement capacity, my, my day job is, you like to, like to say, in Hartford, you know, I've worked very closely, at least the last four and a half years, with your former rack, well-loved. You've got some big shoes to fill, obviously. But you're very experienced, you're well-liked. The guys and girls in Hartford love you, so welcome, welcome back to New England. But it's been very beneficial, at least I can speak for Hartford, maybe not so much Enfield, but the chief is right, having a department with a little over 100 officers, there's no possible way you'd be able to have five or six detectives just focus on narcotics. And having patrol officers try to do that type of work, especially in uniform and the cruiser, that, that kind of, you know, the drug dealers can spot you a mile away. So it's, it's great to have the task force officers. I'm sure for the chief, his favorite thing with the DEA is probably the asset forfeiture.
Of course.
All that money gets returned. You know, we also got to think about, too, is, you know, we're a, a town that's on a border with Massachusetts. So with our officers, there's jurisdictional issues, but with the DEA, the task force officer, having them sworn in, they can cross the border, they can cross the lines. Additionally, we have, you know, a big highway that runs through Enfield, I-91. I'd like to think a lot of people live in Enfield because of the highway, the easy access, you know, to get from place to place, but guess what? For the drug dealers, the traffickers, they like it for the exact same reasons. Anywhere close to a highway area, transport, distribution centers, your likelihood is you're going to have a lot of that going on. So it's good to have the DEA with us. Like I said, it's, I can speak volumes, I could go here on and on forever, I won't do that, but like I said, I've been close to the DEA, all the task forces in Hartford. But I will say the DEA is top-notch. They've assigned quality individuals here, they replaced a rack with another good rack, we have a great group supervisor in this area, the detectives have been unbelievable. It's amazing, the investigations and the cases and the wires and stuff that they do long-term. And there's just no possible way that the chief could, could do that with his personnel. As good as they are, and they're awesome, but the time will not allow for these long-term investigations. As you mentioned, some of these investigations are tied back to foreign countries. And you can't expect that with, you know, patrol unit or patrol officer. I mean, it requires a lot of effort, requires a team effort from other agencies, other departments, and, you know, they're, they've been very successful. So the DEA does have a footprint here. As much as people probably don't know that, they don't see the DEA, they don't hear the DEA, it's kind of designed that way, they kind of lurk in the shadows, but they're here doing some of that dangerous work that, and let's face it, that probably 99% of the population don't want to do. So thank you for being here, look forward to working with you in Hartford, look forward to lurking you here in Enfield as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Ludwig.
Follow that. Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Question.
Sure.
If, if the DEA is involved in an arrest, is that considered a federal crime, or is that local, state?
It, we do both. It depends, what, what it is, what we're working on. I mean, because we work a lot of times with our local and state counterparts, not everything's, I always say, it's all, it's not always a federal case.
Right.
We always, what we do at the DEA, we always look for the next level. Sometimes there isn't a next level, and it's not, it doesn't meet a, a federal threshold that we go, we go state. But we, we never, we never judge what, where the case starts, but our job.
Reason why I ask, they closed our courthouse in Enfield that hasn't reopened, and I know we have an issue where things get either thrown out of Hartford conveniently, or, so, you know, it, does it, and that's not a federal court, well, there is a federal courthouse there, but, so I'm quite, does that play into it? Because again, you do all this work, and it's good work.
Yeah.
And then we send it to Hartford, because we don't have a courthouse anymore, and it's either delayed, bail's low, or folks are right back out in the street.
Our federal court system is the same as the state court system. We have to sell, we have to sell it to our federal prosecutors. I mean, so we deal with the same issues that a detective in Enfield deals with the state courts.
It's very frustrating.
It really is.
Very frustrating.
We can't, but we do dabble in both. My federal agent can go to state court, you know, and my, the TFOs can go to federal court. So they, we can, we can try to work both.
And I know there's been a great program, we bought it, brought it back after that issue you mentioned, so I appreciate the little history there. And I, I agree, I think it's great that we work so well with our state, federal partners, because it, I mean, I understand you have three offices in Bridge, you know, Bridgeport, New Haven.
Yeah.
I've said this, and Enfield is a perfect spot for an office because of our location, because of the, what we mentioned on the highway, because of Springfield right over our border.
And I was going to mention that.
Right.
They work a lot with my office in Springfield also, because, because where you sit.
And unfortunately, we do, look, we have to be honest about it, we do have drugs going through this town more than we'd like.
Yep.
And there's no doubt about it, and, and the fentanyl stuff is just really scary. And I guess my, the other, the question I guess I would ask is, do, do majority of towns in the northern part participate? Or are we one of the few, meaning within the DEA? Do we, are, are other towns cooperating as well?
Sure. I have currently, I have 11 current TFOs, I'm bringing on a 12th in Newington.
Okay.
In January. So, I mean, that's, I'll give you an example, Bridgeport, I think I only had maybe six TFOs, and, and here I have, I'll have 12.
That's great.
That's, that's huge.
Yeah.
Plus another seven, another eight agents. I mean, that's, that's a big number. You know, we, we have a pretty good workforce here in Hartford.
No, and, and I say it all the time, like to Councilor Russo's, we, we don't talk about it, but we do have help from the DEA, which I think is well-needed. And it's very important, because again, I wish people understood how dangerous fentanyl really is.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, and just, unfortunately, we, we see it, we see the, you know, the reports almost sometimes on a weekly basis of, we have to give people Narcan and things of that nature, and it's, it seems to be getting worse, not better.
Unfortunately, it's a norm now.
Right.
You know, which is, which is, it's sad. I mean, it was never when I grew up, I mean, when you grew, we didn't have this problem.
I know. Again, I agree. We appreciate your partnership with the town of Enfield, I know we really do value it, and you've been a good partner for a while. And I certainly know you mentioned the gentleman who's a great Enfield officer, who's been
Yes.
Mr. Chamberlain, who's done a great job of this, so again, we thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one more thing, too. So God forbid, we have a bad spat of fentanyl going around, which we've seen in other cities and towns. And let's say you have three or four overdose deaths within 24, 36 hours. I mean, the DEA is going to bring all their, their TFOs, they're going to saturate them into this area, and they're going to get the bottom of it, they're going to get the dealer, they're going to make sure it doesn't, you know, continue. So I mean, that's the benefit of having the DEA here, is something like that pops up, God forbid. I hope it never pops up in Enfield, but we've seen in other towns and cities, a bad batch of fentanyl from a certain dealer goes around, and the next you know, the DEA, you guys are on it.
The Village Green in New Haven, the last one, I thought, maybe five or six years ago, maybe four or five years ago, but 26.
That was laced with.
Yeah, yeah, they thought, they, they thought they were getting, some thought they were getting cocaine, and it was laced with fentanyl. 26 dropped. So, yeah. I mean, that, like, like I said, you know, what I, I strive to is communication with, either the chief, a captain, or lieutenant who runs the narcotic bureau in each town that they send a TFO, and it's constant communication. And nine times out of 10, all the chief has to do is call and say, hey, we have an issue here, here's an issue, I need help. And they get, they get the help.
And those photos of those folks that overdosed, it's too bad it didn't make out the people really saw what they were, it was crazy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question, thank you. Thank you very much for all that you do. We appreciate that, I won't belabor that point. Just, I'm curious, how many other towns in Connecticut have an officer contributed to your task force?
Right now, 11, 12's coming on. So 12, I'll have 12, end of January, I'll have 12.
Okay. Thank you very much.
This issue is very near and dear to me. I had some things I was going to say, but some of Councilman Ludwig's remarks just brought me back. I know what it's like to see somebody dying, or dead, because of fentanyl, because my son was one of them. It's an epidemic. And you're right, Mike, people don't talk about it, and they need to start. Because I wasn't the only parent going through this with his child. And it needs to start with the laws. And the laws need to help parents, even their adult children, to help us, help our family get the help that they need. Because currently, our hands are tied, your hands are tied, and it all boils down to money. Everybody wonders why. Public safety is number one to me. Because if children aren't safe, I don't care what else matters in this world, they're not going to learn, they're not going to play, they're not going to have fun, their parents are going to be worried about them playing at the playgrounds. It all starts with safety. I've always been that way, and I will continue to always be that way. And maybe, you know, years ago, if people took it more serious, the problem, my son would still be here. Because next week, somebody listening right now, one of their children might not be here. This is a serious issue, and we need to address it and stop playing games. It's real, it's happening. These people are murderers who are pushing this fentanyl, because I'm going to say 80% of the people don't even realize that it's in the product that they're buying. So I apologize, but this hits home more than anybody else, or equal to other people in my situation. You're in a thankless job, and unfortunately, a good day at work for you is when you don't see results of people dying, just like a DWI. My father was killed by a drunk driver. Every person gets upset, they get pulled over. Well, you never know. They may just stop that one person who is about to kill a family of five. And, and you never know the results, because they eliminated it. And it's, it's something that people got to look at the other side of things to realize that it's, it's more than money. I mean, these are people's lives that you guys deal with on a daily basis. And who knows, you may just save a life with your speech alone today of, of somebody younger who's willing to take the time and listen to your speech, instead of just rolling their eyes, here we go again, it's a waste of time, because I got something else I want to talk about. So I want to thank you both, and I want to thank both departments for everything you guys do, from the bottom of my heart, and maybe somebody's life you're saving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I wish you a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Moving on, Donald Noonan, Director of Public Works, and Robin Nichols, Principal Program Manager at CR COG, CROG.
Mr. Mayor, we're, I believe, honored this evening, not only Robin came, but the Executive Director, Matt Hart, of CROG is here. It's an important agency, it's a group of which we are a member, there are a lot of pass-through grants from the state and the federal government that Enfield receives through our participation. Mr. Hart has been a great partner. He most recently just gave another letter for us in support of the Enfield Square for our CIF application. And trust me, his word and his support means a lot. He's been in government, he was a town manager himself, so he knows how this works. And I, I welcome him to come on this matter, he's wanted to come and visit, he took this opportunity to come this evening on this issue, but I would like him just, perhaps too, Matt, just to give a thumbnail of CROG, just as to how important it is for us to be members, and to what our residents receive as a result of our membership. And thank you so much for coming, and you too, Robin.
Thank you so much for having me, Mayor, Town Council, Mr. Town Manager, thank you for the great introduction. Here to talk about the proposed changes to the ordinance, but first of all, I'll talk a little bit about the Capital Region Council Governments. So we serve 38 municipalities, including the great town of Enfield in the greater Hartford region, a residential population of almost a million people, and a geographic region of over 1,000 square miles. So very good size by Connecticut standards. We're the largest of the state's nine councils of governments. So we are a governmental agency, we provide a variety of services to our members. Transportation planning is our largest single department, and in that role, we administer federal and state funding for both planning, as well as the execution of various projects. And I know that Enfield has received various grants in the past in that arena. We also have a Department of Regional Planning and Development, where we serve the land use in the economic development community, such as town planners, economic development professionals, et cetera. Very pleased to support the Enfield Square project, to issue letters of support in, in regards to your application seeking state and federal funding. Third, we have a Department of Municipal Services, that's headed by Pauline Yoder, who's joined me today, our Chief Operating Officer. And in that role, we provide a variety of services to our towns. Most notably, we have a purchasing coalition that serves approximately 140 of the state's 169 municipalities. And we go out to bid on behalf of our members, and we seek to negotiate the, the best price for both commodities, on real basic things like road salt and fuel oil, as well as more complex things like firehouse software. And then last, but certainly not least, and this connects in part to, to the previous presentation, we have a Small Department of Public Safety and Homeland Security, in which we support public safety departments, emergency management, and public health departments across our region. We administer a variety of grants for them, help purchase regional equipment, as well as seeking funds to conduct training. We have a handful of trainers on staff as well. So that's just a very quick overview of the Capital Region Council Governments, and the town of Enfield has been a member for, for a considerable length of time. So now I'm going to transition on to talk a little bit about the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, or CSWA. It was formed back in 2010, and it's established pursuant to state law. It is a, CSWA is a public agency as well. And we serve 14 municipalities, 13 of them are within CROG. We also have the town of Cromwell, a little bit to our south. CSWA itself, at present, it doesn't own any facilities, doesn't own any facilities or have its own staff. We, CROG, provide staff support to CSWA through a memorandum of agreement. And the original bylaws and ordinance that you adopted, as Mr. Nunez said, were enacted back in 2010, when CSWA was originally formed. Now, each member town, each of those 14 towns, the chief elected official is automatically a member, and he or she has the ability to designate representatives. And Mr. Nunez has served as your representative in a, in a very, very able capacity. I want to appreciate, I appreciate his dedication. He always attends our meetings and contributes to the discussion. Our membership dues, you know, I think are relatively modest. At present, Enfield is paying approximately $1,400 a year for its membership within CSWA. We've got an executive committee, and we do require an annual meeting each and every year to elect officers, vote on CSWA membership, and a handful of related activities. So that's a little bit about CSWA. So let's talk now about the change in the bylaws and the ordinance. Why are we bringing this to you? Why are we asking the 14 towns to adopt these changes? Well, I'll take some of the credit. I've been with CROG roughly three years now, and when I first read the ordinance, I thought it was just too complicated in some areas, five tiers of voting, for example, and then missing, lacking some detail in other areas, which I'll elaborate on in a moment or two. These amendments are designed to simplify the membership process and the voting process, eliminate the need for the member towns to adopt these revisions every time we change the bylaws. So if you approve this tonight, and I hope that you do, when we go to modify the bylaws in the future to meet changing conditions, you won't, you will not have to go through this process to revise the enabling ordinance. So all the members did adopt this back in June. However, in order for it to become effective, the legislative body in each of the 14 towns needs to adopt the ordinance as well. needs to adopt the ordinance as well. So some of the major differences between the proposed ordinance and the ordinance that you presently have on the books. Number one, we want to expand the purpose to include, as Mr. Nunez said earlier, food waste and organics. How can we get food waste out of the residential waste stream and the commercial waste stream? It's typically the heaviest component of the residential waste stream, and thereby the most expensive. That's a major focus of ours right now. We also want to go out to bid on behalf of our members to negotiate the very best contracts that we can for both residential and commercial waste collection. We're creating a fifth subregion for membership. The majority of towns in our state are eligible to join CSWA. We are looking to grow the membership over time. The residential population that it serves at present is about 440,000 people. Simplifying the voting process. So right now, there are five tiers. We're going to three tiers, it's going to be based on a population basis. So the small towns, and we have small towns like the town of Bolton out east, they will have, they will have one vote if this is approved. We're going to have tier two, this would include towns like the town of Enfield. You see the population, 25,000 to a little under 75,000. Those communities will have two votes. And then our largest communities, and right now, we only have one, the city of Hartford in this category, they would have, they would have three votes. Reducing the number of designees slightly from three to two, to keep it more manageable, moving to staggered terms for the executive committee, so that we have that institutional memory on the board. Executive committee officers now would only be able to be removed for cause, which we think is a fair standard. Seeking a little flexibility in terms of when we hold the annual meeting, and then some other operational items, like the ability to meet remotely, virtually, which wasn't, we didn't have the technology for that back in 2010. So those are the major differences between the ordinance you have on the books right now and the one that's in front of you, the proposed revisions. However, in order for this to become effective here in town, you would need to adopt it as a legislative body, and we're respectfully requesting your approval when you get to that agenda item later on tonight. I'm happy to take any questions that the council or staff may have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming, and that was a great explanation. I do know there are quite a few questions about this, and due to the special guest is a 15-minute time limit, I don't know if we want to start this now, we want to wait till it comes up on the agenda, or somebody entertains a motion to change the agenda and move it up. With the amount of people here tonight, I don't think that's a good idea. But I don't think if we start questions right now, we're never even going to get close to getting through it. So maybe after public communications, we could move it up. So I'll entertain a motion. If that's, that way you don't have to stay all night long, because the public's here to speak, so I want to let them come up first, and then you'll be next on the agenda. How's that work?
I respect that, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. So anybody want to make a motion to move it?
A motion to move item C to, which would be, I guess, 8A after public communication?
Motion's made, is there?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? We will see you shortly.
Right, thank you.
I thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Public communications and petitions. Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item number seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds, eight minutes. During public communication, item 16 on the agenda, if prior to 11:00 p.m., each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour, unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to an individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct and shall refrain from personalities and improper languages. Okay, so Ken, are you still here? Because you were the first one.
I just, second time.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. And where did you go on me? Oh, Ken Boulet, Brainard Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I'll get started where I kind of left off. And this has to do with possible privatization of rubbish recycle and transfer station. Yes, a private company can come in here, probably lowball it for a year, two years. They're in business to make money, then the price skyrockets. After two years, the equipment is gone. To get equipment to pick up the curbside, you're probably talking about $5 million at the price of the trucks. The last time I bought one was $460,000. And if you could get one, and you're about two-year minimum to get a truck now, after it's ordered. The private company will have us at their mercy, because we can't afford to bring it back. Their RRM employees support other divisions, such as snow plowing and many other tasks that are needed. Quite a few of the RRM employees work for Highway in different degrees, and their pay is coming out of the RRM budget, inflating that budget. So it looks like, you know, the refuse and resource money is more. The Highway Division has only 10 employees, where we had 25 years ago, so these individuals are much needed to make our streets safe, clear of snow, maintain them. There's one thing with snow plowing and road treating, and this is New England-wide, you can't get companies to come in here to plow snow. We've been out to bid the last, well, quite a few years, but the last two or three years, we've had two companies that bid to come in here to assist us with the plowing, and only one of those had a sander for treating the salt. Lost my cell. I could go on, you know, forever, but no private company is going to give the service that these men and ladies give the residents. The second tipper that we're charging the residents at cost for the tipping fee of $120 is probably go to $300 or $400. There will be no more, I forgot to put my tipper out, and to go back and get them, because we've been doing this many times, because people, you know, get jammed up, forget what day it is, they'll say, "We'll see you next week." These employees take great pride in this community, they care about this community, and they notice things. We had one employee years ago, noticed black smoke coming out of a chimney of an elderly resident's house. He notified authorities, they went there to the house, got the woman out of the house, cleared the air, this employee probably saved the lady's life. He did receive a proclamation from the council for his heroic actions, and this is just, you know, things that happen all the time. You know, the bottom line is, if you get rid of it, the cost of bringing it back is crazy, you won't have the equipment. I did say that before. These men and ladies care, have roots in this town, many family members, and they want to do the best job that they possibly can. They've been asked over the years to cut runs, we just recently cut a run back in the spring, and these guys have done everything they can to make it work, saving the taxpayers' money. And, you know, they care about their jobs. I have a lot of knowledge about this, I'd be glad to talk to any one of you offline. I still have a home phone, because my wife won't give it up, so it's easy enough to find me there. I want to thank you all for what you do. You guys don't get enough appreciation, you have tough jobs. And I know with this, with the private company, it might save us this year, I mean, this coming year or the following year, because the price may be a little bit cheaper, but as I said, it skyrockets. And again, thank you all for what you do. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Ken.
Sir, in the back.
Lisa.
Nope, farther back.
I'm here on behalf of not just all the residents of the town of Enfield, but also, I'm the president of the Local 1029 Labor Union here in Enfield. For those of you who are not familiar with Local 1029, we represent nine divisions, including solid waste, highway, buildings and grounds, library staff, custodial staff, water pollution control, clerical, and fleet maintenance. So those are all the nine that I represent today. We are also a part of a bigger union, is ASME, which consists of 1.6 million members, with approximately 35,000 residing in the state of Connecticut alone. I'm here today to pretty much express concerns that I have for my workers' safety, and just here to show face really for the union, because I know you don't really know what we do, and I know that we don't necessarily know everything that you guys do, so I think we need a better information line there. I know that we've requested additional trucks to meet our operational needs, yet those have all been denied, dating back to 2020. Furthermore, our own fleet maintenance department has been instructed to limit repairs based off costs, which inevitably affects our service capability and the safety of our workers. Like Ken just stated, we had runs cut, jobs not filled, resulting in increased stress on our drivers. The workload has escalated from, we were picking up about 600 to 700 barrels, where some, some runs are double that on one truck, which is, do the math, it doesn't, there's no longevity in the equipment. If, if this is a strategy that you guys think identifies savings by beating up the trucks and, you know, running through the workers, I don't stand for that. For instance, you send a truck out that's been picking up a run for, let's say, 500, 600 barrels, you can get in in enough time to take care of your truck, grease it, those things aren't being able to be done, because we don't have time. They said if we're not, if we have no time to take care of the trucks, then we don't take care of the trucks. That's been stated to us numerous times. I urge you to consider that there's potential efficiencies that can be achieved elsewhere. I know that there's been three buildings in the town of Enfield that tallied up to about $2.5 million. If we're looking to save money, I don't really think that sets a fiscal prudence. Local 1029 has proudly served solid waste in the town of Enfield for over 60 years. The union has been 60, we've been picking up trash for a lot longer than that. Our ASME model, as an international, is make Connecticut happen. Our local 1029 motto is, "We make Enfield happen." And I'd like to extend my gratitude to the members of the council who prioritize the residents' needs and care about the essential services that we provide, as well as we do. You could come down, you could email me, arodes@enfield.org, you can come with a ride-along, you can come throw bags with us, you can, we, you don't know what we do, so we like to show you what we do, informational for all of you guys, you can come plow with us, ride a two-man downtown. I'd really like to see one of you guys come downtown on a Tuesday with us to understand what we do. Other than that, that green looks real good back there, and you're going to be seeing a lot of us. So thank you and happy holidays to everyone and your families.
Good evening. I have been a resident of Enfield for over 60 years. I've been an employee of the town of Enfield and a proud member of ASME Local 1029 for over 34 years. In those years, I, as well as most town employees, have given well over 100%. I love my job and the people I work with. However, over the last year, I have seen things, heard things, that have made me feel unappreciated as a town employee by management and members of the town council. It is a wonder that anyone would apply for a job with the town, with what went on with the Board of Education employees, and now with RRM. Don't get me wrong, for most of my 34-plus years, I have felt secure in my employment and appreciated. I am fortunate that I have enough seniority not to have to worry about my position and pay, but many employees don't have that luxury. How can you expect town employees to be dedicated and loyal to an employer that is not dedicated or loyal to them? In fact, management, in my opinion, based on what I have heard, are actively trying to make taxpayers think that town employees don't do a good job. I saw the hint of privatization of trash coming down the pike, when out of the blue, in 14 years I have done Vehicle Day, USA Hauling calls me and asks me, "Do you have a Vehicle Day? Can we bring a truck?" And great, I'm happy to have them there, but that was just the first hint. All of a sudden, USA Hauling is everywhere. They're sponsoring events, they're showing up to things that they've never done before. I'm just curious if this is already a done deal and we're wasting our breath? Like, have you guys already made a decision about this? We're going to spend $30,000-plus for a study of RRM. Why bother? We haven't listened to one study that you guys have had in over 10 years. I take that back. The study of recreation, you did follow one recommendation. You took out Green Manor Pool, and that's all that's been done. There was a study for EMS, said fire departments should run EMS. That hasn't happened. There was a study of DPW. Nothing from that study has come out. That study stated that DPW, for the amount of acreage and square footage that they had to deal with, was grossly understaffed. And what has the town done? Absolutely nothing. In fact, they're leaving, purposefully leaving positions open and being unfilled. I'm fortunate, I'm hoping to retire in two years, but as a union member, I think it's very shameful what you guys are doing. Privatization is not the answer, you guys lose control over what happens. And speaking as a taxpayer, I have never had a problem with trash pickup, or yard waste pickup, or any of that. If I have an issue, I can go right to DPW, and they're right there. You're not going to have that if you privatize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next. Anyone else? Sir.
First off, I'd like to say-
Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry. Derek Chapin, 1308 Enfield Street. First, I'd like to say, what I say here is not a representation of the people that I work with, I'm a public, I work for the Public Works, and what I say here is my opinion, doesn't represent any of them. I've been working for the Department of Public Works for 13 years, 10 of which I've been with the solid waste division. I work with some of the most humble, dedicated, and unappreciated people throughout Local 1029, most of which live and grew up in this town. I never knew what it was like to work a thankless job until I started at the DPW. Prior to me working for the town, I was that resident throwing whatever I wanted to in my garbage barrel. And then when the operator left me a violation sticker, I would curse up and down, "How dare they, I pay taxes." I was not educated enough to understand that that guy was going to get in trouble, and the town was going to get fined if he took that item. It wasn't until I worked on a garbage truck in Thompsonville, with ice and snow on the ground, 35 degrees, raining, and a resident yelling at me, did I start to appreciate what the DPW does. I've been lucky enough to be chased by someone with a knife on High Street, also almost dragged out of the truck on College Street. A guy jumped out in front of me when I was plowing his road and didn't want snow in his sidewalk on Martin Terrace, and I almost hit him. And I almost, I've almost gotten hit by multiple cars on different occasions. These are my stories, but every DPW guy has them. My point being, if you haven't done the job, you know nothing about the job, no matter how much taxes you pay. The town council has hired Mercier Group associates to conduct an efficiency study on waste services in town. It's the town council's job to have the best interest of taxpayer dollars. I believe $30,000 could have been better spent, I also understand the town council has a job to do. The problem I do have is the town seems to cherry- the town council has a job to do. The problem I do have is the town seems to cherry pick where cuts are needed to be made. The town conducted an efficiency study within the last five to eight years that said the workforce is understaffed, and we only lost jobs since. The taxpayers have invested into this service, the trash collection service, the last 100 years to build it is, to build it to what it is today. Has anyone reached outside the Enfield bubble and compared waste collection services with other towns' residents? It's about the only thing we have non-Enfield residents wish they had. Educate yourself on what other towns around us get with their private collection service. This study should be used to recognize inefficiencies in the waste collection service and make those changes to better the service, not eliminate and privatize it. This appears to be a political agenda pushed by a certain select few as an excuse to privatize the service. The town already has no control over the disposal cost side of the service. If you privatize the service, you then eliminate the cost and control on the collection side of the service. A private service may be cheaper the first contract, but once your workforce and equipment are gone, you are at their mercy, just as you are with the disposal price. This decision to outsource this service is one that will affect the town for eternity. There's no reverse button, and it's never coming back. The investment has been made. Maintain it and appreciate it. Stop taking it for granted. Lastly, if the town council is truly concerned with the inefficiency of any services in this town, why was the work of Ellen Zoppo and John Santinella holding accountability to the most inefficient service reversed? The taxpayers of this town pay more than $16 million for five separate tax-collecting fire districts. That's more than three times the cost of our waste removal service, which is at your doorstep 10 times a month. Where is the town council to hold the five fire districts accountable? Mayor Nelson, your fire district alone increased their operating budget $1.1 million in the last two years after they chased out the volunteers and refused to work with the remaining fire districts towards consolidation. John Santinella said if an efficiency study towards consolidation was conducted, there could be a significant savings, possibly millions. In fact, the Hazerville Shaker Pines consolidation study that was already conducted says those exact words. Why is the town council ignoring this? The fire districts have a strong political influence in this town. The fire districts' commissioners are comprised of past firemen, their friends, and their families. There will continue to be zero efficiency, zero accountability, and a significant waste of taxpayer dollars unless action is taken. If you truly care about the efficiency of the town services in this town-
Derek, Derek, how much longer-
Start with the most inefficient one of them all. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Derek. Jason.
Good evening. My name is Jason Walsh. I live at 12 Waymouth Drive in Enfield. To be honest with you, I had read about a bunch of this stuff online, and I was a little bit concerned about it. I wanted to come in, I wanted to hear what was going on. I have, I am opposed to privatization for garbage collection. As a regular citizen of Enfield, most that I know about my trash is that it gets picked up regularly, and I have no complaints of that. It gets picked up regularly. They seem to do a good job, so I can't really make a lot of comments on that. But I do think that privatization is not a good idea because, well, people made the points that, you know, that they're going to run it as their business, they're going to try to expand their business, and once they have us, that we're not going to be their priority as much as new business. And that, that's just the reality of how things work. So I think that we need to stay with, you know, equipment that we control, equipment that we maintain, people that work for the residents of this town and care about what their job is. I know that sometimes that seems a little more expensive, but I think it's worth it. I will say that I was a little bit concerned when I heard that, you know, maintenance is not a priority on equipment. I think that's really a recipe for disaster. I don't know if it's true or not, but it is disturbing to hear it. So I just wanted to come and say that I am opposed to that, to privatization. And I thank you for all your time, and I appreciate the fact that you guys give up so much of your personal time to come and do this for really no compensation. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Lori.
Lori Gates, Three L Court. Quick, short, good news. I don't have a weight total from our cookie drive that we ran yesterday, but we did mail out 99 boxes overseas to nine addresses, including two ships and three different countries. So thank you, everybody, for all the donations. Also, I am here to announce that on Wednesday, December 11th, we'll be getting the Reach Across America convoy back this year as they head to Arlington from Maine. They'll be here in the morning. The route information with approximate times is coming. EPD is working on it. We'll be letting the schools know. Each year, this is like our 10th year, I think, that we've gotten them, and they come back because of the job that Enfield does. They just, I always hear, you know, they pick their drivers across the region for who gets to drive to Arlington. That's their gift to their drivers to say thank you for, whether it's X number of miles or safety, whatever it is. So they go down there, and then they'll run into other drivers that have been there before. And those other drivers, like, "You went to Enfield?" And they're so excited to talk about how Enfield comes out. They come back because of what Enfield does. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that goes out that supports this program. It's a wonderful cemetery ceremony on Saturday, but while we're getting the things there, we get to experience them coming down the eastern seaboard. So not everybody gets this. As a give back, sometimes they allow us to put a couple people in the truck, and I have two seats, and so Pam and I were talking about it, and we've decided that we're going to give those seats to our top two donors for the 2024 Enfield campaign. So we have a Vietnam veteran named Joe Legori and Marie Pisnar that'll be riding this year. So, thank you.
You can't. That's a conflict of interest.
We'll tell you what time to show up at Walmart. So just wanted to let everybody know they're coming. More information will come. We'll be here for the Board of Ed meeting the night before they come, so we'll put it out on ETV. We'll contact people, put it out on social media. We'll get it to the town manager's office so that anybody with any questions, we'll try to get the information out there. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
And I'm just going to mention while Lori's seated, she, we were aware of this, but she swore us to secrecy. But given our expanded footprint on all the social media, we're going to try to stream it live. We're going to try to get it out to all the residents because when they come through here on Town Hall, it is quite an amazing event, and the drivers really, they really are excited to come here. So we're going to try to get out there and push that as much as we can, Lori. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Sir.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Twitchell, 18 Long Hollow Road. I thought it was important to listen to everybody's piece of the pie in the town, but what comes to mind is a conference that I went to once where there was a lieutenant colonel gave a speech, and he talked about the first thing that that soldier does is make his bed. I have not quite 40 years in town government and working for United Technologies, and part of my function was, as a facility supervisor and then becoming the director of facilities for a large town, I found that making your bed is what keeps you afloat. One of the huge things that we need to do and make sure that we keep that boat upright all the time is to work with preventive maintenance. Having five years working directly with NASA of federal government projects that kept all of that equipment that we spend for the $700 hammer, we spend good money for, but it, again, it all comes back to that preventive maintenance. So let's bring that forward to what we have today when we listen to these gentlemen talk about how they care about what they do and how they give back to the town. And we'll use, you know, the locals that's here tonight about how they take care of their individual routes that they may take, whether it's picking up leaves or it's picking up household trash. If these guys and gals make their bed, when they have time to bring those trucks back into the shop, whether it's plowing or hauling trash, then we're ahead of the game. We're not chasing. I sat on a, briefly sat on a committee here in town, and I used many of the examples that we use for the town that, I work for the town of Simsbury, that we used in the project of making sure that instead of chasing our tails to make sure, we had everything ready and ready to fire and go. It's the guy, when he brings the truck back, the truck is swept out. It's his truck. It's his responsibility. If it's not working, it's because he didn't take the time to make his bed. And that's what you have to, that's what you have to plan for, and it's proven, not only in local industry, but now I did it with the school system, actually, I worked for Avon and Simsbury, that things that were impossible to do became reality. We had cleaner schools. We had cleaner grounds. We had people coming to work smiling and not complaining about, you know, "I don't have this and I don't have that. We didn't do this and we didn't do that." It's, again, if you go back to that analogy of make sure that you're ready for that next day, you lose half the bitchin', because people, it's theirs. They care for it. They own it. They're part of that team that drives it. First day, nah. Second day, nah. But eventually, it becomes the reality of, it's theirs. They want, they want people to see them doing what needs to be done. And I'll bring this kind of full circle. For three years, I have sent pictures to locals in the DPW that Long Hollow Road was a long, long, long overdue road that cost the town, and I don't know the money, the dollars and what it cost, but it was expensive per foot. The roads, the roads got spider-cracking throughout it now. Why? Because of the way that it was built and the drainage and how it was, how it was designed. The Public Works Director that was here at the time, you know, put his hands over his ears. He didn't want to hear about that. But now, now we have a task on a road that's, I tried looking for it, eight, nine years old. It's just loaded with spider-cracking throughout. You'll lose the road. You will lose the road. We'll be back in that same thing. So my final thoughts are, is Long Hollow Road, make your damn bed before we lose it and we're back in that situation that we really don't want to be. You want to be proactive, not reactive. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. George. George.
Good evening. George Young, 8 Holly Lane. It's time to give a shout out to the Finance Department. While many of us, including the council, were enjoying Monday, November 11th, as a day off for Veterans Day, the towns outside the auditing firm and the finance director were busy completing the June 30th, 2023 annual comprehensive financial report. Or at least, that was the date by both of them on the, as of November 11th, 2024. It took a lot of effort to complete this task, for which they should be applauded. It was a welcome sign and can be seen on the town's website in the Finance Department section and labeled ACFR 2023. It is about 144 pages of reading on the website, although it will soon be available in print. If you like numbers, then there are plenty of them. As Mr. Wilcox stated in his letter to Mr. Bronson, and I quote, "The independent auditor concluded, based upon the audit, that there was a reasonable basis for rendering an unmodified opinion that the town of Enfield's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023, are fairly presented in conformity with GAAP," and that's the end of the quote. For those that don't know, GAAP is an acronym for Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. In addition, the CPA firm also issued its report on the same date on their consideration of the town of Enfield's internal control over financial reporting, which they state is an integral part of an audit performed in accordance with the government auditing standards. I have not seen that particular report. There are so many interesting things to read in this report, and especially on page 80, which is note eight to the financial statements concerning the tax abatement for two large Enfield properties for land and buildings. You might want to read that. The last area, which is really interesting, starts on page 126, and it is the statistical section. Most of it is a fascinating study of what has happened in the last 10 years, and you will get a good idea where your monies have been spent. Who are the principal property taxpayer today as per 10 years ago? What has happened to reduce the percentage of tax collections in 2023 to the lowest level of collections in the past 10 years? Why does a town have 225 more employees today or in 2023 than in 2014, of which 100 of them are in education? The police must be doing their great work as they were more than, there were more than 3,800 traffic violations in 2023 than in 2022. The arrests and parking violations also increased from the prior year. And one other note you might note is that there were 13 refuse trucks in 2014, and there are still 13 today, and I'm not sure if they are the same trucks or not. I hope some people will take away some time from Facebook and other inaccurate sources and read this report before the next one is finished. The state and most banks that monies are borrowed from would like to see the annual audit report within six months of the end of the fiscal year. For us, it's June 30th. I'm sure everyone is now working hard again to complete the June 30th, 2024 audit. It seems to never end for the Finance Department. I'd like to make a couple of comments on two resolutions that are going to be talked about tonight. One is the tobacco use, and I'm not sure if someone on the council will ask a question when it's time to ask questions. How does that compare with the state's 25-foot rule from when you leave a door, if that's at all effective? And the second one is regarding the Resolution 14J. The Enfield Square Mall, we're reducing the assessments by about, let's say, almost, almost $10 million. How does that affect the TIF that we have in this town, either before, now, or in the future? So if someone could ask those questions, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else?
Sir.
Neil Narcon, 5th Clear Street. Getting back to the trash aspect of this thing here. I've seen what privatization does to any entity in itself, and all it does is initially give you a cheap price to get in the door, and afterwards, before you know it, you're, you're way above your head to what you would have had normally. So, you know, I'm against privation for the, for the trash pickup. We kicked that around like four or five years ago when the national debt was 27 trillion, and here we are, four or five years later, discussing the same thing. Costs have gone up everywhere, and we've got to be vigilant on that. And something cheap now at the expense of down the road is not going to do it. These guys are all out to make money. And how do you make money? You got to cut, you got to cut somewhere. They're the same people, running the same trucks, got to pay the same bill and fuel costs like everyone else, and they're going to make a profit. And it's only going to happen by cutting, cutting the line around some extra services. Public Works, I know our barrels have gotten damaged in the past, and they've had no problems supplying us with the parts, and we rebuilt them and got them back in good condition again. I don't think you're going to see that with these guys. I don't think that's going to happen though. The quality of work they've been doing is pretty good from what I've seen. I've gone to other towns where they have private haulers and everything else, and there's trash all over the road. When they empty the barrels, you know, it falls, it doesn't always fall in the truck, but it goes around. And the other thing, too, is I notice is they don't always empty the barrels. These guys shake the barrels well. They're empty when they're done, and it works pretty well. I've never had to go out there and clean up after them. Makes a big difference for a lot of people. I can do it. A lot of people may not be able to do that there. And will they supply damaged parts for damaged containers? And will they supply damaged parts for damaged containers? I don't know where you're going to go for that. Or even who's going to supply them down the road. That's a lot of stuff that's really to be looked at. So, you know, and again, I'm against all of that. So keep it the way it is. And like I said before, on the disposal side of things too, I said a few years back to all these towns that are in the district of that trash energy plant in Hartford that got shut down should get together with all the town lawyers and consider putting a class action suit against Lamont for that, for shutting that plant down in the first place. Cause 42% of everything went to there. So right now everything's being sent out as far as Ohio from what I've heard. And that's not going to be cheap. So we all end up paying for all that. So he's got to do his job and not talk about all the surpluses he has because he doesn't want to maintain the properties he has. So whatever went on down there, they got to fix it. They got to get it going. I mean, that's, that's the only way to do it. The other plants around in the state are all up to capacity. They don't have any way of taking over Hartford stuff. They're, they're filled up. That's it. Everything's built to capacity. Not a good idea. So that should be done. All these towns have to get together under that district and that jurisdiction and do something legally to put the heat on them and get these things up and running again. Cause we paid a lot of money into that and paid money just renovating it two years before they shut it down. Millions of dollars. Why? What's the cost savings there? The other thing too, another subject, Ken, you did a nice job summing up the DEA and what they've done from a personal experience. I really felt that. Cause any of us have been in that situation with kids being affected and anything else. You don't know until it happens to you. So I commend you for doing that. Looked like the real thing. Anyway, thanks for coming in, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sir.
Good evening. Scott Beeler, 40 Moody Road via Armstrong. I say Moody Road because I, I live in town. I pay taxes just like you guys in front of me. And everyone behind me that is wearing a green shirt with pride. Think twice. We're paying for a survey, but you will be paying more in the long run. And then if you ever walk Teaville, how much trash is out there on the curbs, outside? Think about the parks. Think about Shaker soccer fields, Brainerd Road, Potter Hollow. Everyone's just going to bring the trash air. It's going to be a dumping ground. We won't have the equipment to pick up everyone's trash because we outsource. It's going to be a bigger problem. Just look at the big picture. Please think and talk it over. And like Andy said, come on down. See what we do. The door is open. The door is open. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, closed public communication. And now we're going to move on to councilman communication and petitions. Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. So we're going to go to number 11 or C. So C, we moved up to. So C, which is now going to be 8A is a resolution for Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority CCSWA Enabling Ordinance. On May 17th, 2010, the Enfield Town Council unanimously adopted a resolution number 914 that created an enabling ordinance to become a member of the Central Connecticut Solid Waste CCSWA. In fall of 2024, CCSWA has amended the enabling ordinance and is now recommending the repeal of the 2010 enabling ordinance and adoption of the revised and updated 2024 enabling ordinance. There is no budget impact. The recommendation is the council approved the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council adopts the 2024 CCSWA Enabling Ordinance. Stay prepared. 11 2024, prepared by Donald T. Noons, Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Welcome back. I hope that wasn't too long for you.
Not at all.
But I didn't want to keep them waiting. So you had a great presentation. I appreciate it. So questions? Councilman Hendrickson.
All right. Thank you for being here. I do have a couple of questions. So the dues that we pay for the CC, does that come out of CROG dues that we pay? Cause I don't see it on the budget line. I'm just, so we, there's a separate budget line for the 1,400 through the mayor to the town manager?
It comes out of DPW budget.
Comes out of DPW budget. Okay. Thank you for that. Also, there's 38 members in CROG and you say there's only 14 towns that meant part of the waste authority is, is, am I missing the map here? Or why is there only 13 towns out of the 38?
Nope, that's, that's correct, counselor. First of all, though, I wanted to point out that Pauline is joining me instead of Ms. Nichols because we have multiple towns reviewing this ordinance this evening. So I wanted to be here in Enfield tonight and Ms. Yoder joined me. So, um, membership in CSWA is not obligatory. It's, it's voluntary as to whether or not towns choose to join it. We will shortly be embarking upon a membership campaign, looking to grow the membership because we think there's strength in numbers. We would love to see a majority of CROG towns become members as well as other communities in different regions around the state.
Okay. Here's another question. You brought up that food waste and organics are the heaviest part of the.
Typically for residential.
Okay. I saw part of legislation proposal last session was a mandate for separating food. Was CROG behind that or was that just?
We, we track the legislation. We are careful to, we have, we have a legislative committee in place at CROG. So we don't want to take a position that is inconsistent with what our legislative committee and our policy board will support. I can't recall. Can you recall off the top of your head whether or not we took a position on that?
Sorry, Pauline Yoder from CROG. That was not part of the CROG legislative agenda because the CROG legislative agenda focuses on items that is a consensus among the 38 towns. And there was no consensus on supporting that legislation. I believe it came from deep, but I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Just a question. When you brought it up, I remember the mandate. So I just wanted to ask the question. I guess one other thing was, um, so on the new plan here, and I'm not sure if we don't, if we decide not to follow one of, go with one of the companies that you suggest we go with, then we are removed from the authority? And then possibly liable for any bills that come that are owed? Is that the way this is?
No, no. And we, yes. Yeah. So at present, we don't have the, the only contract we have in place for our members is for textile recycling, textile recycling. We are though, looking to bid other services, including residential and commercial collection. But this is to provide more of a menu of options for our towns to participate in if they so choose. Because we know even across the 14 towns, they all handle waste collection very differently. Some have it as a taxpayer funded service. Other communities do not. Some communities franchise it, et cetera. So we're not promoting one size fits, fits all models and you would not be penalized in that situation.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
I think Ms. Yoder wanted to add a point on that.
If I may add, the, the primary focus is on disposal and on focusing on reuse and the food waste, organics and recycling as opposed to the collection side in terms of the bids that we're going to focus on, especially initially.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ludwig.
Just clarification for the public. Cause I think we're not voting on privatization tonight. Want to be clear to everyone who's watching because I'm, we're not voting on privatization. So I want to be clear. Just not for you to, just to make sure everyone understands.
That's a distinct agenda item.
Right. It's a separate agenda. But, but you mentioned, and again, welcome. Sorry, welcome. You mentioned in your presentation earlier, this will make it so. If we vote on it, vote on the, we're voting on the amendment to an agreement that we're part of an organization. That's what we're voting on tonight to be clear to the public. We're not voting on privatization. Want to be clear. You've said if we, we pass this, this will make it easier going forward when it comes to amendments. How? So I'm just going to say this as a legislative body. This should come before us. So the public, as you can see, because again, folks are out there, whatever. If we pass this, does this mean future amendments won't come back to the legislative body? I was just wanted you to clarify the, I think you called efficiency and how this works going forward.
I'd be happy to do that, counselor. So we, we have two legal documents in effect.
Yeah.
So we have a set of bylaws that we follow, like most public organizations have. And then we have, what you're voting on tonight is an, an enabling ordinance. So when a community joins CSWA, they do so by adopting that enabling ordinance. So one of the provisions that we've built into these amendments is that when we make simpler revisions to the bylaws, we're not going to subsequently have to amend the enabling ordinance.
So what's the definition of a simpler amendment?
Oh, for example, like the number of members of the executive committee. That would be an example.
Have to admit, I understand. I'm all for efficiency, but I'm also, I'd rather personally rather take the time to have this done in public. So the legislative body, me being the one in Enfield votes on it. Just my own opinion. I understand what you're saying, but you know, again, someone else who thinks it's simple and others like some of the questions we may ask, we may not, may think it's simple. I know I don't, I asked some questions maybe people think are out there, but I like to understand the whole, when it comes to an agreement. You know, that I understand the nuances of the agreement before I sign up and you know, now I've hamstrung a council for the next, what I may or may not be a part of. So, so I appreciate that, but I'm not necessarily saying I agree with it.
I, I respect your position, counsel. I would emphasize though, that Enfield has representation.
Understand.
And CSWA. And you would, you would have a say through your representative on any amendments to the bylaws.
So that, so I appreciate that. I just want to let you know my, my objection there. And then kind of off the question, it says in section three. So the study that again, we, we, the study that you, the folks are running for us on your privatization. If we, if, if by chance we did that, we took a vendor that's not on your, the list, the preferred vendors. It says here that we, we, we could be forced to withdraw because we didn't take, unless I'm misreading it. It's saying, I don't remember if I read it correctly. Um, we have an obligation to, you know, deliver solid waste, food, organics recycled to a facility designated by CSWA.
A facility. That's collection. Privatizing is collection.
Right.
Where they take the trash to is what they.
This is the disposal side.
So, okay. So that's, so what if the collection company doesn't go there? Is that a possibility? I know there's limited disposal facilities in Connecticut, as mentioned earlier.
Right. And you know, we respect that a member community may decide, may make that decision. But again, as Ms. Yoder pointed out, we're talking about disposal, not collection here. But if, if, let's say at some point in the future, at some point in the future, we have a designated collection facility. You know, disposal, excuse me, disposal facility. If Enfield did not wish to participate, you know, you could certainly withdraw as, as a member.
So as we sit here today, isn't that the, at least the biggest issue? We've had this conversation with our director of public works for, for years that the cost of now recycling, for example, is just as expensive, if not more than regular trash. Isn't that the main issue? And someone mentioned earlier that we, you know, that, you know, that certainly the governor's chosen that we have to send our, this, you know, our trash outside of the state, which is driving up the. So, so I guess what's that position here? I see that more as an issue than collection, at least at this point in Enfield. I mean, is it disposal? I mean, that's, that's driving up our costs. What is the, the CSWA doing about that?
Sure. No, great, great point. Great point. So back in 22, we, CROG, we conducted, we commissioned a three-part waste management study. Uh, tasks and we completed, our consultants completed two of the three tasks. We retained a national consultant, RRS out of Ann Arbor, Michigan. And they subcontracted with Tetra Tech, another national firm. The first task was to look at waste management infrastructure within 100 miles of Hartford. And this was motivated largely by the pending closure of Mira's plant in South Meadows. We knew that our towns increasingly were going to need to pay to have residential waste and commercial hauled out to other parts of the country. The second phase of the study was to develop a short, a list of short-term recommendations focused on things like organics diversion, recycling. That's really what we're engaged in now. The third phase of the study, which we have not commissioned yet, would be looking at the citing, the citing of waste infrastructure. And that could include things like state-of-the-art waste to energy. Long-term, long-term, we do think, you know, the state is going to need to invest in that type of infrastructure because of the, the financial burden associated with hauling our waste to other parts of the country. Eventually those landfills will look to close as well and will be hauling the waste even, even further away at a greater expense.
So, so again, if you're joining an organization, in theory you have buying power or you have lobbying power. Why aren't we doing that now as an organization instead of waiting? Because the cost is already here. And, and I'll say this, I'm concerned with the, when you, we break out food waste and organics throughout the entire agreement. We're not ready. I mean, and the point of the legislation, I don't know if it needs to be in there yet. And I don't want to be giving him, you know, for, there's, there's going to be a cost to that, to the town if we have to go down that route. Yeah, maybe if we have to now further, you know, consult or isolate or specialize trash. I don't know. Donna, I don't want to speak for you. We haven't talked about that here on, on the council yet, as I know we're getting to the budget for next year. That's going to be a big deal phoning from the resident, whether it's private or not. And then the cost, it's not going to be cheaper. I'm sorry. I know. I mean, I wish it was, but it's not, just not naive. It's going to be. So I, I understand why you have it in here, but is it, I don't want to be held to it yet because it's not what, you know, to my knowledge, it hasn't passed the legislature. I hope it doesn't because to your point, how can you make that change when you don't have a disposal solution? Cause that's going to be a big deal with the disposal solution. That's what concerns me when we do these regional things. And I'm, I'm just saying, I'm speaking for myself, not anyone else. I'm not speaking against the organization at all. But you know, and I, I don't know. I get nervous about this stuff because this is a big change, at least if I read it and I could be misreading it. So I apologize if I am. But I, it seems like a pretty big change. And I, I, like I said, we're making amendments and, you know, I, I just need to, I need something to convince me that it's the right thing to do. Cause it doesn't feel that way to me.
Okay. I'd, I'd be happy to comment. I think in total, the recommended changes to the ordinance are relatively straightforward and not significant from a content perspective. You know, it's streamlining it, making the, the voting process simpler, et cetera. I think many of the, the concerns you're raising were, are in, in the ordinance that is on the books now. Now with, with respect to the citing of future facilities, I do think our board increasingly is interested in looking at that relatively near term. So I would not be surprised, you know, within the next year or two that we commission that third component, that third task under our waste management study where we ask our consultants to look at the potential for citing new facilities in our region.
I think that has to be the number one priority, in my opinion, based on everything we've been told in the last five years. Based on seeing the cost of recycling where we used to get a credit and now it's more expensive than, I mean, and, and if I'm reading the amendment correctly, the red language is new. So the food and waste organic is new. It's red. So I apologize if I've talked about things early in the agreement, but again, I haven't, I wasn't here in 2020. here in 2010, believe it or not, and, so I don't know exactly why we did some of the things that are here, so I'm kind of taking it from that perspective. And again, I'm leery of regional agreements where, again, where held the stuff, and, again, a new council will be here in a few years, and they may not know why we did this now. And so, again, I'm trying to, trying to be thoughtful here, and, and so, just want to be clear, if, if I voted against this amendment, the study that we're doing, you know, that we're doing, will we get, this is again, based on a bylaw, I know, I know it's disposal, but, so we won't, that's part of, because it says in authorizing debt, would that be considered a debt to, for your organization versus the town? Because we, you're doing some work for us, but we decide we didn't want to do it. You see what I'm saying?
And when we're talking about debt with respect to this ordinance, that is if CSWA were ever to own its own infrastructure, which at present, it does not. And your waste management study is separate from CSWA. It's separate from our discussion on this agenda item.
And question for Donald, we did this five, six years ago, did we do it through CSWA? We did a study about whether privatization made sense, we didn't do it through the, we...
I don't remember doing that during my term.
Oh, I don't remember, I know we did it back in like 2000, when we got cut eight million from the state, we had no choice, we were looking through it. So this might have been 2017-ish. Yeah, I don't know, Steve, just curious. All right, no problem.
Counselor, I was, I was before my tenure. I don't know.
I thought you'd been here forever, Donald.
Yeah. Well, that's true too, but not...
I've been at CROG since 2012, I think, late 2010, excuse me, so I do know that, that that's, your study in 2017 was not done through CROG.
Okay, it couldn't recall, appreciate it.
Right, and so...
I guess my last, I'll stop talking, again, I think disposal is the number-one issue here, in my opinion, based on everything we, and I guess I'm a little concerned, as we sit here today, we get in the, but we don't, and as a regional group, that we're not using leverage to make sure that the state understands that disposal is the biggest issue, and I'm not suggesting this in public, but I don't disagree. Have we looked at ways of, again, influencing the state to say, you know, look, we can't continue to ship our garbage to Ohio and points unknown, and I even heard we've thought, I think there's been things going to China, from my understanding, and again, I'm speaking a little bit out of church, but I've heard some of this stuff. How is that sustainable from a cost perspective? It just simply isn't. So I mean, so I guess I'm just saying is, if we're going to remain part of this, I'd like to see our priorities change where disposal is the most important issue. Thank you, appreciate your time, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I will say, Mike, I thank you, because you asked a lot of the questions.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry, you asked a lot of them. A couple of the concerns I'm still left with is the costs associated, that if we do have to leave, because if, if, and it's a huge if, if we go the route of a private collection, and they choose to use a facility that's not recommended by you, so I guess this question kind of goes back, I'm looking at our member towns here, and I believe most, if not all of them, are already private collection, aren't they?
Not, not all, there are some that have a taxpayer-funded service, such as the city of Hartford, I think the town of Manchester is another.
So if I can answer that question, my understanding in terms of private collection and disposal, you as the, as the contractor for the private collection, have the ability to tell the collection person, people where to send the disposal? That is your prerogative. So, so that's, that is not, that should not be an issue with regards to the collection side of things, if you choose to, that's, not us, again.
So if that's the route we go, it's not out of the normal for the town to dictate who this collection company would take the trash to?
Correct, so for example, a lot of the Mira towns, some of them were private haulers, who the town said, you're taking the trash to Mira, to give an example.
Right, and then, so would you happen to know, out of the list of member towns that are in here, how many of them? And, and to be clear, this will still be a taxpayer-funded trash collection, it'll just be done through a private vendor.
I think definitely Hartford.
So we're not, we're not saying that the taxpayers have to get their own person to collect their trash.
Correct. I, I don't, this is the list of the towns, I don't know if you know.
So the question again, Mayor, is which of these communities have a taxpayer-funded service?
No, which of them use a private hauler?
A private hauler, it doesn't matter who pays for it, but which ones of them are actually using a...
I don't know.
I believe the majority, I believe the majority.
Yeah, the majority of them do, because I think there's only four left in the state, four... Eleven in the state of Connecticut.
That was the last, I know that there was eleven that still pick it up, and one just went back now to doing it.
Picking it up themselves? Okay, that'd be something, I'd be curious to find out why they went back.
That was Killenley?
Yeah, okay.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so keep that in mind, Donald, we want to, because I want to look at all sides of things. And then my biggest concern is if we approve this tonight, we never have to see it again. You guys have the authority to make any change, anytime you want, without our say. And to me, and I don't want to use this, but I'm just getting a feeling of the siting council all over again, that we're going to create this entity, that, that it just evolves and it grows, the town of Enfield's gone through similar things where, you know, people ended up going to jail over misuse of funds and stuff like that, and removing the oversight is never a good thing in my eyes. I understand it makes it a lot easier for, for whatever body is trying to do it, to move forward and make changes for the better, but just to give up, you know, just a simple review of the document like this, I mean, that is, that is the strongest language out of this entire document, is you don't have to come back to us. So I'm, I'm very nervous, and I do want to say, I appreciate, put this aside, I appreciate everything you do for the town of Enfield, because you guys are here every time we need you, and I feel bad about this, but you've got to see my concerns when you're saying, we don't have to come back to you anymore for changes. Right now, we have one vote on the executive committee, two votes on the whole body, but tomorrow, you can change this document and take that away from us. I understand, and then, you know, Enfield being, looking at the list of towns here, we are one of, if not the, largest town, other than Hartford. So I just, I think our opinion should matter, because suppose something happens where a bid comes in, and they say, you know, if you're under 100 tons of trash, we're going to give you a price of this, but if you're over, the price is going to climb huge, like they do with the water bills and everything else. Well, we're one of two larger towns, we would lose that vote every time. So I just get very nervous about this, Matt, and I don't know if you have something you could say to put me at ease, but that's where I'm at.
I respect that, Mayor. Again, if we're talking about future amendments to the bylaws, you know, you've got representation in the organization, and there's a, there's a process for amending the bylaws, it's a, it's also a public and open process. CSWA meetings are public meetings, so it's not like an amendment to the bylaws is going to happen behind closed doors. There's a whole process set out that governs how they're amended and modified. What, what this is saying is that every time we amend the bylaws, we would not subsequently need to amend the, the enabling ordinance.
Right, I, it just...
If I can just add to that, so if we, in terms of the bylaws, as Matt said, it is a public, public meeting, but also, we, CROG, in terms of its philosophy, works on consensus. So usually in our meetings, and it's CSWA is the same way, if there is a town that objects to something, then it's not a, you know, five, four, majority vote, we're just going to railroad that. We definitely have a philosophy of working on consensus, that's been true for, for, for our whole history, and so one of the reasons, the different things that we don't support is we, we work on people, we have to agree, because that is the way our organization is successful. And so that, that's one thing that I'd like to, to point out here, so if, if there's, and there are, you, Mayor, will definitely be informed of anything regarding the, regarding the, regarding CSWA, because you are, you will be, you are the, the main member with, currently, Donald, as you're, as you're designated, so, so you will have all that information. And so that's, I don't know if that sort of helps with regards to that, because it is definitely, we are not a, oh, you know, Enfield's the only one who objects, but we're all okay with it, that will, it's just not the way CROG operates as an organization in terms of our, the way we, we build, the way we're successful as a region is we, we have to work, people, we have to work with those who agree with us. And, and in terms of policy board or CSWA decisions, that, that has also been, that's the consistency of where we are. And Matt, does, the, this is, you know, has been a little bit of a challenge with regards to, you are currently a member of, of, of CSWA, and if we were to change, change the number of executive committee members, if we had to go back out to 14, six, or hopefully more towns in the future, to have them pass another ordinance, it would, we would never, excuse me, sorry, we would never, it would never, we would never change anything within the bylaws, because it would be impossible.
Right, and I appreciate that, and, and I guess I just have to put my faith in CROG and you, Matt, that you're looking out for our best interests, you have, Chris speaks very highly of you, you know, signing on the projects and stuff like that, so I guess my last question is simple, what are we doing to lobby the state to open Hartford back up, to have them invest some money in this? Because we're all, all of us are about to get crushed if they don't do something soon, because how long are we going to be training this trash to Pennsylvania and Ohio before we're stuck? I mean, and, I mean, do you have any hope, anything, or is Hartford completely dead? It's gone?
Well, we are closely tracking the Mira dissolution process, and as you know, there's a new authority that's, that's set up for that. Public sentiment against a large-scale waste management operation in Hartford, you know, strongly, strongly opposed, you know, the MDA has a study that's underway right now, that's looking at future uses of the site. You may have seen the article just this past weekend, that they're selling two of those facilities in South Meadows to, to a private entity, but they serve as transfer stations, transfer stations. So...
It's not looking good.
I don't know that I see a large-scale waste management operation in Hartford in the future, something more significant than a transfer station.
Right.
But, but, you know, as you and Counselor Ludwig and others have indicated, this is the critical issue that our state is facing, and that is something that CSWA and other waste authorities around the state can take on, on behalf of their regions. You know, the governor and the current administration seems to be, with respect to waste management in our state, really looking to the regions to take the lead in helping to come up with solutions that work for their region, as opposed to state, statewide plans, and the state taking the lead on the creation of new infrastructure. So I think this is a very, very critical time for waste management authorities in, in our state, and that we need to step up and, and take the lead to help our communities deal with this very challenging issue.
Right. All right, thank you very much. At this point, with reservations, I will support the document, so you can move forward. You know, Donald stands behind it 100%. You've always been great to the town of Enfield, so I have to take you at your word for it, and, you know, put my faith in you and Donald, that this is the proper thing to do. But like I said, every question that Mike had, I have them all outlined, and I think you did good enough on them, it's just given up, that one piece of control makes me nervous, but I will be supporting this document tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Sure?
Just one question, so when we become a member, is that just a one-year membership? Like we just pay the dues, or is there a way out of this if we do disagree?
There, there is a process to withdraw your membership, yes.
How difficult is this process?
I believe it requires the repealing of the ordinance.
Yes.
Right, because they can't, they can't tie the hands of future councils, and, yeah, even the language in here, as the voting authorities say you were the second vote for the town of Enfield, as our turn, terms change, obviously, if we don't get reelected or we don't run, they'd have to allow new members, and, but it does say clearly that if there are associated costs, you know, if we committed to a new burn, and I'm being hypothetical, a new burn plant, and then we walked away, we would be responsible for our commitment to that project, right?
Yes, Mayor.
I spent a lot, like you, Mike, I spent a lot of time reading it, so I could sell this for you, don't worry.
I'll bring you with me next time, Eric. You can go on the road with him, Mr. Mayor.
All right, seeing no other, oh, John walked out, we got, yeah, we got enough. Seeing no other comments, roll call, please.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella has stepped away. Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four with reservations, but four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Nissuta.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
That's eight in favor, one against, whoops, seven in favor, sorry, one against.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you. We appreciate it. Hope we didn't keep you too late.
Glad to be here.
Okay, now we're going to move on to Councilman Communications. Anyone?
Marie.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So I want to give a shout out to everybody who made possible the torchlight parade last night. It always starts off the holiday, and I love it. I'm going to thank Veterans Council, Pam and Lucian, Wreaths Across America, because I was shocked tonight when they told me that I'm going to get in one of the trucks. I have supported Wreaths Across America forever. I buy wreath every year for my dad and my uncle. I do the buy one, get one, and I encourage everybody all the time to do it. I lost two friends this year, both veterans, I will be placing wreaths on their graves this year as well, so it was very, very touching. And it brings me to birthdays, so I want to give a shout out to a couple birthdays. Our town attorney had a birthday, so Tom, happy birthday, a couple of days late.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and also I'd like to extend a warm thank you to all the council that put on that parade for me last night.
It was wonderful, wasn't it?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, and we have our mayor here, who's going to be having a birthday coming up this weekend, so when we start to get older, I love birthdays, because to me, a birthday is another year that I have on this earth, and the older we get, the more I appreciate them. So we celebrate birthdays in my house big time, so I wanted to give a shout out to Tom, and I want to give a shout out to Kenny, so happy birthday, guys.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
And you've got a lot of birthdays under your belt to appreciate, so...
I know, I do.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, I have a few things, a couple things. Okay, Derek Chapman came up, and he... Derek Chapman came up and he had a lot of valid points about the fire departments. And I can't say I don't disagree with him on any of them. Unfortunately, we have zero control over the town fire departments. We cannot make a merge. We didn't stop anything moving forward because there's nothing to move forward. The fire departments are working amongst themselves to come up with some plan that they have invited the council or certain council members to sit in and get up to speed of where they are. So I don't think anybody disagrees with you, but the town of Enfield has zero control over that. Lori Gates, cookies for camouflage, Wreaths Across America. The thanks goes to people like you and Pam and Lucian who keep these programs alive. To be part of Wreaths Across America last year and see those trucks come in and to see the morale of the drivers and everybody who was there was, who supports it. This is kept alive because of people like you who don't give up on our fallen soldiers and our veterans who are no longer here. And as long as we do that with the loved ones that we have, they're never gone. They're always just in our hearts and we can close our eyes and talk to them anytime we want. So the thanks goes to all of you who keep programs like that alive. Steve came up about Fleet Services and maintaining the equipment and he works in two separate towns. I did a quick Google search. Neither one of those towns has public trash. It's done by private companies. And as far as maintaining the equipment, to sit here and listen to all these people talk about the maintenance that's done on our equipment and how poor it is, well, we just cut the route less than six months ago. And I want to say, not one of you who wear the green shirts said why we cut the route. You didn't come up with the reason. And you've got people coming in this room challenging us that it was about money and this and that. Money had nothing to do with it. So ask your fellow union members why that route was cut. Because I'm not going to air dirty laundry out right now, but when you want to start throwing stones and getting people to come down here and challenge us, we weren't the ones who created this. We're doing an audit of a department, which is our job as council members to oversee possible wasteful spending or misuse of time within one of our departments. We're doing exactly what we were elected to do. And to see a group so nervous that we're doing this really throws a red flag up. And everybody who's watching, quit what, or reading Facebook because half of these morons have no idea what they're talking about. Listen to the meetings, okay? We don't want to privatize trash, but there's a serious problem that was brought to our attention and we're addressing it. And now that we know there's a serious issue, shouldn't we audit this department and see what else is wrong? Of course we should. And that's what we're doing. Nobody has made promises to USA Trash Hauling or any other body, nobody. It, it's an open market if we choose to go that way. Most of our guys in DPW Trash Collection do a phenomenal job, but there's always one or two bad eggs in every department, all right? So we're not going to let those one or two ruin it for everybody, but we're going to get to the bottom of it and try to fix it. And our goal is to protect the taxpayers, not to bow down to a union that comes in here and has members who have no idea what started this blasting us up here. So let's get our facts straight. And that goes for you too, Katie. All right. So that's that. The parade. I agree with Marie. I think they did a great job. And I want to thank Mary and Cindy. And I want to thank Safe Harbors for sponsoring the refreshments every year. Unfortunately, this year is the last year they are able to do that. But Mary Keller did tell me, somebody else has already agreed to step up and take over. So again, I want to give a huge shout out to Safe Harbors. They did a phenomenal job. I did have a couple of people ask, why is the parade on Sunday night instead of Saturday night? They're concerned that we may be losing a group of smaller children because they have to get to bed for school in the morning. So I promised them that I would ask. I don't have the answer to it. So if we could look into that and maybe next council meeting, get an update on that because I thought it was a great idea. Mr. and Mrs. Santa showed up and that was a great surprise. He told me exactly what John's getting for Christmas. I can't tell you, John, but you'll like it, okay? So that's all I have. I apologize for getting upset, but to have people come up here and chastise us for doing our job and misleading the public is wrong. It's 100% wrong and I'm tired of it. So Lori.
John, you went first.
No, you were first, then John.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About the prioritizing, privatizing the trash, I wanted to let, make sure people understand that we're only in the discussion phases. So we haven't decided anything. We're just beginning our discussions. And piggybacking on the mayor about Derek Chapman, I wanted to tell him he was right about a lot of his comments. And he said, how do you even know what it's like and what's going on? And I think that's true. And that's why I asked through the help of Donald Nunes, Deb McCarthy, I went and did a ride along on several trucks. And it was really fascinating. I went with the recycle truck and I rode around with Lee Hammer and he was amazing. He knew every house, every barrel. We went down this dead end street and then when we looped around and went almost back down, he says, oh no, that white house right there, they forgot to put their barrel out and now it's there. There's barrels everywhere, but he knew that particular house didn't put it out. He went back a quick circle and, and picked it up. And I had a great time talking with him and it was really interesting. I also did a ride along with the plow truck, which I loved. It was really fun, hours in the snow with Frank Toby. And it was amazing. And he's actually a third generation employee. And I was impressed with that. I also worked with Cambellay and just so many of those people in your department were just wonderful. And I commend them for all their hard work. And I just want to say that we're only in the discussion stages, but kudos to the guys that really work hard. I appreciate it. Oh, I got one more story. About 20 years ago, I looked out my window, our trash bin was full, the lid had blown open and we had like 20 kids over. We had all these pizza boxes. And when I looked out the window, the truck came up and the pizza boxes blew all over the, the street. And if I wasn't in my nightwear, I would have ran out and picked them all up. But that, that guy came out and he picked up every one of those pizza boxes. And I thought, wow, no one saw that but me. And I just wanted to say thank you. And that was 20 years ago and I still remember it. So I know a lot of these guys are good and hard workers. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Lori. John?
So I did step out for one second. I just, I wanted to say thank you again for everybody who put together the Torchlight Parade on, on Sunday. This is my family's favorite night of the year. It's in the calendar for next year. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing and I just didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank people who do so much work to make that a, a great event for the community. And I also wanted to acknowledge that just before the holiday, we had an employee service award breakfast at the Mount Carmel. And it is really amazing to go to that every year and see how many long-term employees we have working in the town of Enfield. It's humbling. They are dedicated servants. It's an honor to be able to pay tribute to the people who have had some tenure. And I think sometimes we forget that we are a significant employer and really part of our job here is to be able to attract and retain the best possible people that we can who take care of us in so many different ways every day. And when you listen to the departments that are recognized and the people in these different departments, you realize how many ways local government touches everybody's lives every day and how many long-term employees we have who are dedicated to helping us. And so I just wanted to call that to people's attention and to acknowledge that, that day because it was really a, a really good, a really good way to start the holiday. And I have some comments on the trash issue, but you know, we'll wait till it actually comes before a vote when we have something to decide. So thank you.
If it comes to a vote. Gina?
I'm good. I gotta go in 10 minutes.
Jeff?
I'll be brief. The Torchlight Parade last night was amazing. Definitely enjoyable cold weather, but it was good to see a decent turnout for the event. And thank you, the organizers in the town for helping put that event on. And my highlight of the night was when the kids got together and they flipped the switch to turn on the, the lights, the tree lighting ceremony. I mean, even as an adult who can't get excited about that, right? And just the location of that, that tree, I didn't notice until I was driving in today on the way to the meeting. I mean, you can see that, I was heading north on Route 5. You can pretty much see that for a half a mile away, that tree. It stands out and that's pretty neat. So the location of that tree, whoever decided to plant that tree a long time ago, location, 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 did a great job. And then one other thing, through the mayor to the town manager, just want to follow up on something. I emailed recently about the passageway, construction passageway that cut through between Hazard Ave and Middle Road. Now, appreciate the quick response. I know on our end, the ball was moving with that. I know it's with a construction company. I did stop by this morning and I didn't see any change, any resolution and that. So I would think with the, the safety issues that are raised, the liability associated, I thought the, the construction company would have got on that, but maybe we need to reach out to them again just to remind them that, that should be a pressing issue on their end. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. And I think when I was on my little rant, I forgot to say, I think our Fleet Services Division, our mechanics, do a phenomenal job in this town maintaining and doing all the maintenance on all of our equipment. And I want to thank them because if you listen to what we heard earlier, it seems like they don't do their job and they do. They, considering what they have to deal with, I think they do a phenomenal job. Thank you, guys. Go ahead, Mike.
Really quick. So again, I just want to thank, thank the mayor and again, Tom Manager, the DEA. I mean, fantastic. I know you were here when it started with the chief. I mean, people don't realize how important, I wish we could spend some more money because I mean, the mayor said it better than I with the fentanyl and how it's destroying people's lives. And again, I know you were involved, you were quiet, but you did it back in 17 and how effective it is. And again, we could go over, you could do and spend it all, a whole hour going over all the big things that have happened over the last six, seven, eight years because of our involvement. And again, it was a solution at the time when we pulled out of that regional thing. And there was reasons why we had to because again, we were the only one that was actually partaking. And so again, thank you for the mayor having on the agenda. I thought it was fantastic. And realize how seriously we do take it in this town. We're not afraid to say we're trying to solve a problem that we know we have. So again, thank you both.
Well, admitting the problem is the first step. Absolutely.
But I think, you know, most communities will ignore it. I'm glad we don't.
Right. All right. Seeing no more public, council communications, moving on to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. No, I, I think it was a very good evening to have both the head of the DEA, the resident agent in charge. I truly appreciate Jeff's comments. He really put it in perspective and you're right. Enfield, we don't sweep things under the rug. We're a rough and tumble town sometimes a little bit. People sometimes get the wrong opinion, but we don't, we don't hide from the difficult issues that confront us. I'm glad that the executive director took the time, Mr. Hart, to come here to answer your questions because this is a huge issue. And to be able to have a man in his capacity showing us that it's going to be regional, that the state has really, I don't want to use the word abdicated, but the state has designated that these CROG and these governmental agencies will be the lead. I think it's important for us to hear what they're doing and to have input and I'm sure we'll follow it closely going forward. And yes, on the DEA, we were involved in that seven years ago. I just, I'm privy to a lot of the things that we heard about, but they're confidential at the time. And I just thought it would be important for folks to know that you made the commitment seven years ago and we continue to keep the commitment to have a detective in that full time. But you can see that we are reaping the benefits of that affiliation. The ability to have those agents swarm and come into this town, 15 and 20 of them, we could never do that on our own. And a lot of other communities are too small to take advantage of it. Some are, are larger and they do the, you know, things on their own. But we're always trying to come up with innovative ways and I commend the chief of police who's always looking for those opportunities. And again, the significant resources we get from the IMREM forfeitures that allow us to do other things and enforcement that we couldn't afford is, is, is very, very valuable. So thank you all for, for your questions to our guests. And I will also tell you that we, in addition to making public safety job number one, as the mayor said, that's where it all starts. And then we can build on education, we build on the other services we offer. John, you're right. It, it's amazing to see the 90 or 100 employees last Friday spanning from five years of service to 40 years of service. It's amazing. And I think it's because we try to make it a good place to work and they give their all to be here. But what I'd like to say also is we take safety number one, not just public safety, but the safety of our employees. And I used to do it as the director of public safety here, working with OSHA and working with KERMA to institute policies of training to keep our employees safe. So when I hear this evening, a statement that, you know, we are not maintaining our vehicles or servicing them correctly, I take that very seriously. I will run it to ground tomorrow. I, I am not dismissing it out of hand, but as you said, Mr. Mayor, I know the folks that work in our, in fleet and do the repairs and they're just as conscientious as all of the employees who came here this evening who collect the trash. So I would be shocked to see that we're not doing everything. And if I thought for a moment, if Donald or once we make our inquiries tomorrow, that we needed to fund it further, we needed more money for maintenance or service or parts, you know, I would be the first one here to tell you and I know it would be unanimous. I don't think that would be necessary. I think it's the give and take and some of its perception, but we do not spare any expense for the safety of our employees and I, I will stress that. And the council did that most recently, we're working towards, and I mean, that's security in the schools. I know it might be somewhat controversial with the SSO program, but it was tested last week or the week before and there was a very favorable article about that. And likewise, I think in all areas, we've always made safety and public safety number one in this town and we'll continue to do that. So we'll, we'll run it to ground, but I, I think the report, when I come back in two weeks, will be favorable. So I think Steve has a comment.
Just real quick, because Counselor Russo brought it up, but he was thanking whoever planted that tree that did a really good job. The person who planted that tree is Dave Tuttle. I met him last night here. He's a retiree. He planted it about 40 years ago with another employee, was only six feet tall. So, and he's still involved in the community, works, volunteers at Lowe's and Fisher's, but I thanked him for it.
Way before I was born.
Dave Tuttle is an absolutely phenomenal gentleman and employee and I miss him. I did see him at the Torchlight Parade too. I almost wanted to give him a hug because he's just that kind of person.
I wanted to hire him back again.
Yeah. He's that kind of person and, and I think it goes right through to his family. And, you know, I met his son last night and it just, truly genuine, good people, so. All set, Chris?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Town attorneys' report?
Well, I have nothing of a legal matter to, to talk about, but I would like to follow up on Councilman Santinella's recognition of some of the employees for the longevity. And Mark Serrato from the town attorney's office was recognized for 30 years of service to the town. And he's done a marvelous job. And also from my own personal perspective, being a rookie, gives me something to shoot for now. Most of you people probably won't be there when I do get my award for the 30 years, but, but I, I will remember you. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I just want to give a shout out to Cooper McIntosh. I mean, I have to say, I think he reads a little better than I do. So, you know, tough shoes to fill. Congratulations, Cooper. No Paul Russell tonight, Chris?
No, I saw with the guests, I sort of anticipated my crystal ball, we might be hearing a lot and so we pushed him till next time.
Okay. Beautiful. Reports of special committees? Seeing none? Un.
Sorry.
Don't be sorry. Go in there. Bob.
General governance did meet and I just want to go over with one thing. George Young asked about the veterans exemption, exemptions, exemptions on the revale. And John Wilcox did a great presentation. I actually have the math here if you're looking for math, but we have followed everything and it's kept up with the revale. Everything's right in line. So I do have the formula here, George, if you'd like to, I'll pass it on to you, so.
Let me ask you, Bob, is that something maybe we should post on the town's website? Or is it too complicated? I would go to the finance director on that.
Well, I think, you know, John, general governance, there's a couple of things John did in general, this because of the question for Mr. Young. And then I know we wanted to hand out the collection rate over the last three years, so folks know that we're monitoring how our tax collection is. So we're ahead of the game in case there is some issues before we get the budget. I know, you know, you put it together. I would recommend you sharing it, because it's, it sort of gives people a good idea of what's happening in our town. If you want to go over, John, go ahead.
Yeah, the veterans exemption is, it's a calculation where it's basically the change in the, I can't remember now whether it's net, net assessed value or, yeah, I think it's net assessed value. If it doubles, then essentially you, or it goes up by one and a half percent. If it goes up by, I'm not looking at the form right now. If it goes up by 50% or more, then you round up to where you double the exemption, okay? If it's, if it is increased by 50% or less, you round down, and the exemption stays where it is. The exemption has only increased by, has only increased one time. We had, I think in the early 2000s, where it doubled at one point. At that time, we did. The last year, the last 2021, when we did our revale, the increase was around, I think the commercial increase was about 8%, and the residential was about 27% increase. So I see that would round down to one, and it wouldn't stay. It would not increase. And we have to file a form with the state to tell them, show them what the calculations were.
And is this different than the disabled veteran? Because disabled's 100%.
We're, we're going to be taking that up, yes. That's a whole other.
Well, that seems pretty simple, though. 100% is...
No, it's not. No, it's not, because they screwed up the wording. Yeah, they screwed up the wording on it.
All right. We won't get into that then.
I just want to say, I mean, this came, so I just want to just, I mean, resident brought up a question. The council referred it to the subcommittee. The subcommittee, to John's credit, did the work. And so, again, we do take your suggestions and your questions. And again, I think that's the way it's supposed to work. Council makes a recommendation. John did a nice job putting it together. And so, I know maybe it wasn't the answer folks would hope for, but it's the answer.
And that's how subcommittees work. Direction from the council. John, do you want to scoot down so you don't feel so alone over there? I feel bad.
John, do you want to go over the collection?
Can you just go over the collection?
Please.
Sorry. That was good news.
So we had, just so everyone knows, we had our director of finance go over our correct collection rate to make sure that our, we're not falling behind on tax collections. As folks know, there's been some businesses in town who have, you know, basically, you know, unfortunately no longer doing business on basically a dime's notice. So again, those things, we monitor, we make sure that we're not falling behind on collections, because obviously that affects our budget. So John did an analysis. I don't know, John, you want to give a, you know, quick for everybody, public and the council?
So I'd like to thank the tax collector for putting this together for me, Todd Helms. The grand list of 2023, which is the current fiscal year, collections through October 31st were 56.08% of budgeted. Last year through October, the then-current year grand list was, the collected percent was 55.61%. So we've gone up half a percent, basically, in the collection rate. For 2021, which would have been fiscal year 2023, the collected percent was 55.85%. So we are, have been maintaining our collection rate for the past several years.
Good.
So you guys haven't done... That is good news. That's all I wanted, was good news. Thank you, John.
It sounds like general governance has been pretty slow lately. Any other questions for general governance, or John?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
John Wilcox. It's not always about you, John. Chris, can we charge John for those waters if he's taking them home, please? All right. So we are going to move on. Reports of special committees is done. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, consent agenda. There were some questions that were, we did get the response back. Are you good with the responses?
I am.
So you're okay with consent, Bob? Okay. I just didn't, I wanted to make sure you didn't want to break it out. So I'll entertain a resolution to approve the consent agenda. Second. Motion's made and seconded. Roll call? Or show of hands? Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you. And then we're going to move on to appointments of the town council. And the first one is, the housing authority of vacancy exists due to the resignation of Mary Ellen Carrasca, Republican. The recommendation is Jaclyn Edwin, Republican, until 11/30/2026.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any other nominations?
They'd be closed.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of closing? Okay. Before we move on this, I just have to say, Mary Ellen has been here for this town forever. She has stepped up when we needed her, and she didn't play politics. She did what she thought was right for the entire community. I have the utmost respect for her. I am sorry to see her retire. I understand why she's retiring, but I still don't think it's okay. We want her back, even if we got to pick her up and bring her to the meetings. I'm sure one of us would be happy to do such a thing. So Mary Ellen, thank you for all the years and years of service you have given to our town. It will not be forgotten. So moving on. Roll call.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Nesuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay. Next, we're going to move on to the resolution to transfer funds for yard waste and street sweeping and catch basin debris disposal from the transfer station 65,000. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund DPW Administration salaries $65,000 to General Fund DPW Highway Maintenance Disposal Services $30,000 to General Fund DPW Refuge, Collection and Disposal $35,000. Date prepared 11/20/24. Prepared by Donald T. Noonns, Director of Public Works.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Hey, Donald, welcome. I hope this is an easy one, so I just want to make sure, because I get, I want to make sure of the budget, the numbers. So I asked about this during the budget, the collection money for the NIPS, you know, the NIP money from the state. We were, again, we were told it was used for the street sweeping. So is this, just want to make sure how this fits. Does it, is it in addition to what that fund is? I just want to make sure that. Completely separate? I mean, if you could, because I get asked all the time where that money is being spent, the other, the state. Just want to make sure for the public that it's a separate fund and what we're spending on, if you wouldn't mind, real quick. Thank you.
Basically, I budget about $80,000 a year. That's, that's what that amount is. And we use that essentially to offset the normal operating costs. We were given very little guidance on how to actually spend this money. Some of the examples they gave us, you could purchase a street sweeper, but we already have a sweeper. So in my opinion, we could use that for the operation and maintenance of that equipment, and that's how we offset that.
Do you have to report that? Like, do we have to file?
As of yet, there hasn't been any reporting requirements. I'm sure they will at some point.
So this is separate than what, right? The money for, that we get that's allocated for the street sweeper? This allocation tonight? It's separate?
Well, it's money that's come into the town.
Okay.
And it's just as part of the, it offsets the tax funding that we require to run the town.
All right. Thank you.
Did you?
No, that was...
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know you had a presentation.
Neither did I, until he said it. He snuck that on the screen real quick.
Yes, I was very, yes, I did that. So we're talking about yard waste at the transfer station. So this is way, way out on northern end of, of the transfer station. You can see a couple winrows here, and you can see some of the debris here. But I really think, I do have a video that Alex is going to play. That's a 44-second video that is this, to help understand how much debris is actually out on site. If you could just, we all can just watch for 40 more seconds.
And Donald?
I would sing, but I'm very, very horrible about it.
Donald, each row is called a winrow, and you're limited by the size and the shape of how much it could be, right?
Yes. Those winrows that we are allowed to do through our, our transfer station permit are 20 feet wide, 12 feet tall, and up to 350 feet long. So you can just see how much debris is out there. We can only take, you know, again, through our standard budget process, we can only take in, to get rid of so much. So eventually now, we're really, we're bursting at the proverbial seams. So that's where that, for the yard waste would go. This is the resident pile, and since the photo was taken last week, the company has come in and already got rid of that. But you can tell, this is a six-wheel dump truck in the background, and that is our loader for scale size. That's a 325 excavator. So you can just tell by size how, what we're talking about for scale of product out. Now, our street sweepings is everything that we get off, again, the roads that we do and anything that comes down, like for tree brand and all that kind of stuff like that. As soon as we sweep it and put it in a truck, it's considered polluted, and we have to dispose of it a different way. And this is from our catch basins, from primarily this pile all the way back to about here was this year. We do approximately 2,500 basins per year, so one half of the town is done one year, the second half of the town is done the next year, and we keep, we keep repeating. So this is how much that we've actually removed and were basically vacuumed out of the catch basins in town. That's how much debris has got in there. And that's what us doing it every two, basically every two years. So that's what this is for.
So first question, Donald.
Yep.
Is the winrows in the back, are we still composting?
We are not. Those, the Butler Company comes in, has a gigantic tub grinder, which is similar to the, this dais, if you made a circle with it, it's just, they throw it in there, and it just grinds it all up, and it does all the stuff like that. To do proper composting, there's a lot of huge equipment cost to it, and we don't do that anymore. We do measure temperatures. We do have, we're required to do that. So again, it doesn't get too hot, and it catches fire like it did before my tenure. So we are responsible for doing that, but we don't, we don't compost like that. The company comes in, grabs the stuff, puts it in a tub grinder, and disposes of it.
Where's the compost come from that's in front of the landfill, the transfer station?
That is some, they grind some for us, just being nice, a nice company. They'll grind, they'll double grind some of that stuff for us. So they'll take, when it runs through the first time, it's really chunky and gross, but it's not sifted, it's not any of that kind of stuff. So it's, they'll run it through again for us, and we, we keep, they let us have a couple hundred yards or 100 yards of that.
Right. So the leaves in the back, I know a particular farmer in town takes them.
Yes.
Why are we still taking them to the transfer station? Why wouldn't we just take them all there?
The leaves we bring to their, we bring to Collins.
Well, those winrows, you just...
Yeah, there's, it's for yard waste, and so people mix up, that could be sticks, that could be anything, all the stuff.
Oh, so that's yard waste.
This is yard waste.
Because you guys separate yard waste and leaf collection.
Correct. But during the year, we could get leaves from people during the, you know, before we start the official yard waste, I mean, leaf collection, sorry. So we could, it could be, this could be, this is commingled for sure, because, again, time of the year and the like. But the strict program, they go directly to Collins.
Okay. So yard waste is considered a clean fill also, along with leaves? So maybe we work something out with a farmer that's got a big hole and wants to fill? I mean, they're doing it with the leaves now, instead of, you know, trucking it there and then having to pay somebody to grind it up and haul it out, try to minimize this, because, I mean, there's holes all over this town. It's not a level town, that's for sure. I mean, you'll never be able to build on it, but they may be able to grow fields on it. And personally, as a kid, I remember hanging out at the dump, and that was not leveled back there. So, and you see how much, can't imagine what's buried there. It's just a thought that, I mean, there's a lot of material right there, and I'm sure it costs quite a bit of money to haul that out.
Yes. It is $4.49 per cubic yard right now, to grind it and to haul it away.
A yard. Three feet by three feet by three feet. So, I mean, maybe reach out to the current farmer that's doing it, or ask the farmers. I mean...
All right, that's a great idea.
You know?
Anywhere we can help.
Anything. You know, who knows? They may take the wood chips once they're ground up. So it's just a thought.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got to come up with solutions somehow, or at least try to. So thank you for the presentation. Anybody else have questions? And our street sweeper is in good shape?
We did a major overhaul last year with it. We had some significant mechanical issues. We bought extra brushes. We did all with, using that, that funding for that, but we did have to do a significant overhaul to that machine.
All right. So you're okay not purchasing a new machine with this money?
It won't be anywhere, it won't be enough, nowhere near enough to do that.
Okay. Good. All right. Roll call.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Nesuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. The next is, resolution to transfer funds for the Department of Public Works Household Hazardous Waste Day, $15,000. I hereby certify that the above stated funds are available as of November 25, 2024, by John A. Wilcox, Director of Finance. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund DPW Administration salaries $15,000 to General Fund DPW Refuge, Collection and Disposal $15,000. Date prepared 11/20/24. Prepared by Donald T. Noonns, Director of Public Works.[1669.48]
You don't have to. But it, but yes, the purpose of just to have, like I said, a more robust Household Hazardous Waste Day. This is the last five years. So we had, again, in 2019, we had 296 vehicles served and it was 10,768 and as you can see going up. But last, last year, we had 402 vehicles served with a cost of 25,000. So this is really correlating that people are bringing in more, they are bringing in a tremendous amount more than what they've had. Yes, this was 100 cars less, but you look at the cost difference, it's significant. So we're noticing that again, more, a decent amount of vehicles, but the products they are bringing in are considerably more. We don't wish to turn away people. We want to be able to provide the service again at the will of the council. We can, we can make sure that we stay, we stay within it and we know exactly, while during the day, we know exactly how many, they call them half cars or full cars or a quarter car. It's all broken down, so it's a running total and tab. So we understand that if you're in line, we may have to cut you off and we don't wish to do that this year based upon our numbers and the products that we've seen. So that's what DPW wishes to do.
And would you happen to have a slide of what is okay for the hazardous waste day?
I do not. It will be posted when, in April, when we set a date for that once, if it's an infirmary tonight, we're going to set a date this week and we'll get all that information out and it's also on our website.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Bob?
Just my question, you're asking for 15,000 and it's costing us 25,000.
I have 15,000 already budgeted. I'm requesting an additional 15 to make the total HHW day $30,000.
Thank you, Donald.
Good, good. Okay, roll call.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, next one. Request for transfer of funds to complete the town hall painting, millwork and gutter repair project, $207,000. The recommendation is the council approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from capital nonrecurring building and ground storage building, $207,000 to capital nonrecurring town hall exterior maintenance, $207,000. I hereby certify the funds stated are available as of November 25th, 2024 by John A. Wilcox, Director of Finance. Date prepared 11/20/24 by Donald T. Noons, Director of Public Works.
So move. Second.
Questions? Presentation?
That's what I'm.
This is, I really wanted one on this one, Donald.
He's going to show it once it's done, before and after.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you, Sheila. Resolution to appropriate funds for the Simon Road Sewer Repair, $572,739. I'm going to read this one so people understand it. The water pollution control facility staff discovered a sewer line collapse on Simon Road near the intersection of Waymouth Road. On September 3rd, 2024, the town council made an emergency appropriation of $1.6 million for the repairs of the sewer main at 920 Anfield Street. There is $572,739 remaining from those funds. The DPW respectfully requests these available funds to be re-appropriated to the repair of the Simon Road sewer main collapse. There would be no budget impact. The recommendation is the council approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Anfield Town Council authorizes the available funds from the 920 Anfield Street sewer main repair account to be spent on repairs needed at Simon Road. Date prepared 11/26/24, prepared by Donald T. Noons, Director of Public Works.
So move. Second.
This, I have a presentation.
I want one on this.
Okay, so first I'm going to orient to you where we are and how this kind of happens. So the white star, that is the intersection of Simon Road and Waymouth Road. This is JFK, this is Holy Family, just so you can, just for orientation. The pump station that feeds or that supply that goes up to westerly, then northerly is right a memorial, the old, what was called Memorial Park at the time. If you drive down Simon Road right here, you're going to see a gated, a pipe gate. That's what leads all the way about a half a mile into the woods, almost near that. And there's a pump station way, way out in the back of the woods. That pump station handles Sapphire and that neighborhood here, all of Buckhorn, all of Birdland and also the Presidential's. So that's what this red line, that's what, the red line is the, is the trunk line which comes down and you can follow my cursor and it comes and it goes into the pump station here. Parts Patricia, some East Gate, this whole, this neighborhood here also flows easterly then gets pumped back westerly, then northerly and then up the road. So orientation wise, that's where you are. So to do the bypass because of where the location is and because of the condition of the manhole and condition of the pipes, we have to bypass from the pump station, go westerly and follow these, all these little trail all the way up here, past Holy Family and at the intersection of Waymouth School Road. For a total of 1.12 miles we need to bypass. For reference, the Little Dig was 1,100 feet. This is 5,900 feet of bypass. So here is the manhole in question. This is where the collapse is right now and this is where we have the steel plate right now protecting it. We tried to protect it while, because we didn't want it, again, we didn't want any emergency phone calls over Thanksgiving and whatever. And we're also finishing up the whole planning stages and ordering whatever. But that's where it is right here and it looks completely innocuous and you can't, you wouldn't even notice it, but it's there. So some of these pictures, Deputy Mayor, you're going to be unpleasant, so, coming up. So right here, that, when I was talking to you about going quarter mile west, then another quarter mile north, right at that manhole, which is right here, we have a 14 inch line, pressure line that gets pushed, that pushes the sewage into this 27 inch gravity line and it goes away. Right at this point here is where the hydrogen sulfide, which comes out of the sewage, turns into sulfuric acid. The sulfuric acid attacks the concrete and it goes in there because it gets all churned up and all that when that force goes finally, when it just, it basically bubbles and boils it out and that's what happens to that pipe. That section is completely, is again, 30 feet of it, plus or minus, is collapsed. The rest of it needs to be lined along with the next two sections that we've, that we've videotaped ourselves. So in this picture here, what you're looking at is the underneath of the pavement of Simon Road. So five inches above this mark is the top of the road. So all of that is gone. This is the part of the pipe here that was up on the top and this is all the dirt that came down behind it. This is the gasket that holds, where the two pipes mate. There's a big rubber gasket that goes around one of the pipes. That's just completely gone out of, out of the way. This is all the, another view of the, of the collapse you see here and all of the corresponding debris and garbage and stuff like that. And all this debris, these stones are making it down. This is about 200 and something feet down from that manhole. So what we've done so far, the 27 inch pipe has been located and it's in Marshfield, Mass. That is located between, almost in between Boston and Plymouth, Massachusetts on the, on the coast. So we're going to be driving out there. They have not made 27 inch pipe in 41 years, according to the company, and these happen to be leftovers that are in a pile in the back of a yard that they happen to just have. So we're picking up all of the pipe that we can get from them, from that company. Sunbelt is going to mobilize on this Thursday to start putting in the bypass from the pump station westerly to Simon Road. Hinckley's going to start mobilizing on Monday. And what he's going to wind up doing is we have to, unfortunately, we have to cut over 12 driveways and three streets. We have to bury that 12 inch pipe that you all saw out on the Little Dig. We have to bury that underneath the road and underneath people's driveways because people, we not, we cannot get them to ramp up and over it. There isn't enough room. So we actually have to dig a trench a half mile long and basically bury it in the road, come back when we're done with it, unbury it, patch it and whatever. And that's what Hinckley's starting on, on that Monday. Lining companies are giving us our quotes. We have two right now. The total lining is 825 feet. So the three sections, the first section right at the manhole, then the next three, well, that next two sections going northerly towards Holy Family will be done. The Sewer Main Cleaning Company is also submitting a quote. We're almost ready for that. We have, Todd Matheson has personally notified Holy Family Church. He met with them in person. Simon Road notifications will be hand delivered tomorrow. And we start excavation on Wednesday, December 11th for the actual pipe break. So a lot going on and I cannot stress this enough and I've, I've mentioned it to Steve and to Chris, that Todd, thank goodness that Todd had the foresight to go out and start checking these locations similar to where the force mains dump into the gravity line. So when you can, you're pumping, you're pumping, when it goes to gravity, he started checking those and that's, and that's what happened. And thank goodness it wasn't, again, an emergent, like an emergency react. This is an emergency to us for sure, but not the response, the immediacy and all that kind of stuff. And that just adds to the complexity of it. Now we're doing planning. Now we're, we're getting everything, all of our ducks in a row. We're going to make this as seamless and quick as, as possible based upon what we know now. And again, considering that we have to go to, again, Plymouth, Mass. to go get pipe, it just shows you, there's no, we checked within almost 200 miles and that was the closest place to have that old pipe. So again, we are fortunate to Todd and his crew and I cannot say enough about them. So that's what I have.
All right, thank you. Donald, so this 572,000 is just the deposit?
It may be until we get to, again, it's a great start because now we can start pulling the POs, at least get all these POs in place and we can get, and we're working and we're moving as fast as we humanly can. We'll know better this week. So maybe on the 18th, if there's something, if that needs to be amended or up, I don't know yet, but I'll know better by that point.
You'll have a better grip on numbers.
Yes. Right now, again, we're moving as, as fast as possible.
Right. So, so along with the previous project, which the council supported 100% is lack of maintenance. And I'm, we're spending all this money to bypass a mile and a, almost whatever you said, of sewage. We have the problem with the force main out front here. That's blown out here in the intersection four or five times. Should we line the entire force main while we're divert, divert, diverting the sewage around it and just be done with it? Line that, line it all the way down to wherever you plan on going now and replacing the pipes?
The force main, we have not inspected it because we can't shut it down. When we do, when we do shut it down, that's when we'll inspect it. We'll make a determination on that for the force main. The gravity line, right at that intersection going northerly to Holy Family, for sure, we've already inspected that and three sections need to be lined for sure.
Right.
After we repair that 30 feet and whatever and fix the manhole and when we're going to line that whole thing.
Right.
That's three sections to get us to Holy Family. After that, Mayor, we could, we could be doing this all over town and it, you know, it's almost a, we're not, we, we could just keep doing this year round and, but again, it's funding, it's everything.
It's, it's something that I think we all agreed on. If you are, have you looked at section four? Does it need to be done or you haven't gotten that far yet?
We have not, we, we got to a point where we can get the stones and all the debris and all that junk and everything up to section three has been inspected and done and it look, and it's getting better, similar to the, when we went underneath the brook, it was kind of, it wasn't very good in the front. And by the time you got to the end, it was, it was better again because the hydrogen sulfide like off gassed and, you know, diluted at that point. That's where we're at with that section three right now.
Okay.
And so section, that's what I mean, section four is like at that point right now where it seemed, it appears to be in better shape because it's so far away from where that, where the gravity line and the force main meet.
Right. All right. Because I think that this council, if you said section four, even section five, I think we would authorize line it while we're going through the expense of diverting all this sewage. I would personally ask you to thank Todd Matheson and the entire crew for looking ahead, realizing we have a problem in these areas. And hopefully this was the last one they had to inspect and not the first one they inspected. But I appreciate them going above and beyond and same with you, Donald. But I just want your crews to know that we support this. It's, it's an aging infrastructure that has been neglected for many years for one reason or another. And it's time we start addressing it. So thank you.
Yep.
I will be supporting this. Michael.
Again, I agree with the mayor on this and again, again, little things. I'm saying this to you as a taxpayer. Your presentation last meeting where you closed the emergency in your presentation, I thought was so important. I appreciate that as a taxpayer. This should be online so people can see it. I, so little things, Donald, that are important. The bullet, DPW respectfully request. I'm sorry, that means something to me. I appreciate those little words like that. And then you're talking to the church and hand delivering, bravo to you, to Todd and the entire crew. I mean, those little things matter. Again, for people, to the mayor's point of building confidence where we're going to spend some pretty big money. And if it needs the, these other things that he's talking about, these other lines, I mean, I have to, I'm going to be upfront as a taxpayer, I appreciate it and I'm more than willing as a counselor to support this because these little things matter and I appreciate it. And again, this presentation is your last one, hopefully is either on the manager's website or on DPW so folks know that, I mean, this is good stuff and I know not everyone watches our meetings. So I mean, I recommend you putting this out on a website because I think it's important because this is good stuff, good information and we are trying to make sure our folks know what's going on. So thank you.
Yep, I appreciate it.
I mean, you look at the area.
I know, it's amazing. It's outstanding.
My, if that pump station were to go down, Donald.
Yes.
What happens? I mean, that's all a Birdland, all a Presidential. I mean, what do you do if that station goes down?
Right now, we are in the process of replacing one of the pumps. The pump, it's, the pump is so dated that we, and it's too far gone, we can't, we were going to, our goal was to take one of the, there's only two pumps in there, was going to take one of the pumps out, replace with a new one, take that pump that was out and rebuild it and put it in for the second pump and take that second pump, repair it so have it as a spare. Well, that, that ship has sailed at this point and we were fortunate during our capital project, our capital process with our last budget, we had 150,000 that's dedicated to that and that's what we're spending on doing the piping, the pump work and also the support work for the pumps and the concrete because it's, it's shot all in there. So that is, it does collect a significant amount of area. Again, when you, you look at all these homes, again, in Buckhorn and Birdland and Presidential's and you add up all those homes, it's, it is significant. So yes, that's, Simon Road Station does a significant amount of work for the town, so.
So when you talk to pumps, I'm assuming only one pump runs at a time and if that pump goes down, the second pump is the backup pump.
We have some that are in that situation and some that work equally, they're VFD, variable frequency drives. So some of them, two pumps will work in concert with one another at a very low rate or one will, or one is off. Then once it comes on again, like in Pheasant Hill, once one comes on and it shuts off, the next one comes on. So it keeps alternating. So equal wear on all of them like that or they're in concert. It all depends on what type of station it is and what, and how it's, how it's set up.
And when do you plan on making the repairs on this station?
The, right now, the pump has been ordered through our contract, RH White, and then we, hopefully within, hopefully within another month.
Oh, so it's underway?
It's been very quickly on, well underway. Once we got word about our capital to do this repair, which is again, it's important to us to get that, that one, particular one fixed, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, so Todd moved quick.
Go ahead. I just didn't hear Donald's answer to the, this was the last inspection you guys were doing. Everything else went well.
No, this unfortunately, no. I wish it was the, the last one.
How many more force main areas?
South Maple is next.
South Maple, all right. Well, again, inspect them. I'd rather. Go ahead. John.
So just a logistics or, I don't know if this is semantics or not. So we approved $1.6 million for an emergency for one specific event. Doesn't the balance need to go back into the general fund and then for us to re-appropriate something? Like are these, I don't know if this is a question for the town attorney. These are two discrete events. The first appropriation was for a specific problem. And if I'm making more of this than needs to be made, I just want to make sure procedurally we're not doing something that we shouldn't be doing in terms of fund appropriation because we did it specifically for 920 Anfield Street. I, I mean, if this is not a problem, just moving funds from one problem to another.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I think over here at the Little Dig, we did two separate. The first one, the first one was that because it put us over the 800,000.
Right.
And the second one was the continuation under the brook, which was considered an emergency.
I understand, I'm just saying, this 572,000 is from the brook emergency, right? And if this is, again, if it's semantics, and this, there's no issues with this, I'm fine with that. I'm just asking, because we're moving something from something that was appropriated as an emergency for something specific, these are remaining funds, they should appropriately, I think, go back into the general fund, and we should do a separate appropriation for this situation. But if that's, if I'm just sort of making that up, and that's not necessary, I'm just asking for an opinion, because I think we need to be careful how we're moving money.
Well, we moved a certain dollar amount and told them to go with it, and you and I kind of led that, and just keep going and going and going, until it's either fixed or it's out. So, this is an emergency also.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not denying any of this, I'm just saying, we appropriated it for something different.
What's your opinion, John?
Well, in my opinion, the actual transfer of money that would happen would come, came from the general fund into an account in the Water Pollution Control Capital Nonrecurring Fund. So there were excess funds in that account. It is a general maintenance account, general sewer line account that we used where we put that money. If I were, if we were to just take the excess funds, we would move them back to the general fund and then re-appropriate back to the same account, okay? So, in my opinion, this resolution basically says the same thing. We are taking those excess funds, and rather than moving them back.
Okay. You've answered the question, if it's going the same account, I'm fine with that. I don't think we need to split hairs here, that's just too specific. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't a separate account for that specific thing, that's fine. I'm okay with it.
Good.
Just, John, isn't that what we did the last meeting? We left that money into the WPC? I think that's what we did the last meeting.
Yes, and now we're.
Last meeting, yeah.
And now we're saying we specifically want to spend it on.
Right, we're allocating it.
Good question.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Where are we in funds for the sewers? I mean, this isn't going to cover what I'm seeing here. So, do we have some money in that sewer fund, in the, in WPC, to move forward so we can keep going?
The emergency funding that we use came from the general fund.
Okay.
We do have some, but with change in the rate structure for this year, I would caution using, you know, not as much as I would like to use. I want to be a little bit conservative with that. There are some additional funds, I believe, in the, in the general fund that we could use if we needed to appropriate additional funds for this, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other, Bob?
It's not good news.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where to bring this up, but should we have a WPC meeting just to see, because of that rate change, where we're at with some of that coming up?
I agree.
Sure, we'll schedule it the first meeting in January.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was going to say the same thing, though. I agree.
That was a good idea of mine. Thank you, Bob.
You're brilliant. He's just brilliant.
Any other questions for John? You good, John? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
Councilor Angier.
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Nusuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you, John, thank you, Donald.
Mayor and councillors, thank you so much, and I appreciate the kind words.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Donald.
Resolution amending property maintenance ordinance. The recommendation that the town council approves the property maintenance ordinance if they desire to approve the recommended revisions to the current ordinance. Be it resolved that the Anfield Town Council approves the proposed amended property maintenance order, Chapter 14, Article 4, Section 14, through 171, through 14, through 210. Date prepared 11/20/2024, Office of Economic and Community Development. Okay, the motion's made and seconded. So, Councilman Santinella and myself have been part of this for quite some time, and I got to say, I'm a little, Aaron, Christie, you want to come up? So, I'm a little perplexed, because there's things in here that were not recommended by the committee, and now they're in this resolution, and if I didn't read through this line by line, certain things might have got past us. And, so, go to 14-175. At no time did the committee agree that the town may employ more than one property maintenance inspector at a time. Matter of fact, it was frowned upon.
That was discussed in the Blight.
It was discussed, but we didn't.
So, really, and to be honest, because there's been so many changes, everything that was discussed, I believe, was put in here, so then it can be picked apart. So if that's something that you guys don't want to do, we can, this is just for you guys to review and pick apart, so, since it never officially went to the council, so.
Right, what makes me nervous, and I appreciate, because that's what it sounded like, everything we threw at the wall down there is in this document. The problem is, if we all miss something, it's in this document. So, I know, I spent a lot of time highlighting certain things, I know, Mike, you had questions, Bob had questions. So, my first one is, and I don't know who wants to start jotting things down, but I would ask that somebody make a motion to amend this resolution that removes that section and leaves it the way that it was, and that's 14-175. And then 14-176 is violations and complaints. The Blight ordinance may be enforced by the property maintenance inspector without the need for a formal citizen complaint. I would never support that. It has to be complaint-driven, and it cannot be anonymous. You have to put your name on the complaint.
Because I know that that was something with Blight Review, we went back and forth with, so.
No, no, I know. And you clarified, when you said you threw it all in here, I totally get it now, so I'm just, as I'm doing my reviews of my reviews, I'm looking also to make sure I didn't miss something. So, and then on 14-178, is somebody, because we're going to have to make a motion.
I've got a star right here.
Okay, 14-178. We also had a discussion about when a homeowner is noticed of a problem, before it even gets to you have a problem, this and that, we discussed seriously about also adding in very distinct language informing them that in order for the violation to stop, you must contact the town and have your property re-inspected, so the fines don't continue, you know, and nowhere in this could I find that, Christie.
Right, and I, and I don't want to speak for the, part of, so Mark Sorato was able to review this for us, and I believe we tried to keep it as, that kind of is more of a town policy, it's not specifically to the ordinance itself. If that's language that we need to include in the ordinance, we definitely can, but from my understanding, that was more so how we internally go through the process, rather than it being in the ordinance itself.
So.
I would actually, I'd actually say, I'm not 100% certain, I would defer to town attorney on that, whether or not we can. We pulled out some things that Mark had flagged as problematic, and those, there were a few instances where it made more sense for it to be a policy and internal operational system, rather than a stand statute, because things can change over time.
I understand, but, and I think John will back me up, and I know you will, Christie, how many people got fines, rectified the fines in a month, but the fines continued for two years, because they had no idea they needed to re-inspect, and I know we had had a serious conversation about this. So, I would ask that, was this removed from the town attorney? Now, this, we have a very efficient department right now, because of Christie, but if she decides to leave and become the town manager.
In Dutech.
Her replacement may not be so efficient, and may get a little laxadaisy, and I don't think that's fair to the homeowners. So, I'm very concerned about that one.
Yeah, and to be honest, I mean, this is something that we'll discuss on Thursday on our Blight Review Committee meeting, but we internally have, and I know I've shown this to you before, the flow chart, but there are additional steps that we're including internally in our process, where it's not specifically stated in the ordinance, but there are things that we're going to be doing to make it, the communication between staff and the homeowner more clear that, A, they are in violation, or they need to contact us. I'll be going over that in Blight Review, so I don't want to take up time here, but.
You know, to be honest, you can't necessarily be nice in an ordinance. You can be nice in person, and that's sort of the policy end of it, is how do we be nice to people and work with them, whereas this has to set very specific parameters from which to operate.
I agree with you, Aaron, but it seems like, and I don't know if the right word is entrapment, you know, I send him a notice, he didn't cut his lawn, and we start a Blight violation against him, he has no idea that he needs to call and get his lawn re-inspected, and three years later, he gets a notice of foreclosure. To me, it's not about being nice, it's about common courtesy, this is the step. When a police officer gives you a ticket, you're going to have to report here, and he explains it, and that, and I know you support it 100%, I just want to make sure it continues, so.
And also, I don't want to, because there was a comment, I believe, in the public hearing back in October, where when we go into adding that, the notice that we sent for, when it gets to $10,000 to $15,000, so, sorry, Section 14-184, the foreclosure of liens for Blight violations, I know in that section, it says the Office of Economic and Community Development may serve written notices about those specific, and someone had mentioned it should be, we shall, but that then ties our hands, where if I forget to send the $10,000 one, then we have to start all over. So it's kind of that situation of, if we put too much in here, we're putting the responsibility on the homeowner, which obviously it should be, but we're kind of tying the hands on both ends, so we wanted to be as firm as possible in the ordinance, but also allow the ability to make the process go as smoothly as possible on both ends, if that makes sense.
No, I understand. So my, my next concern would be 14-182B. It says that the, after the appeal period pursuant to CGS 7-152C is passed, any person having been issued a citation may seek relief from enforcement citation fines from the Blight Review Committee by contacting town manager's office. Great. But nowhere in this resolution did I see that any fine, any reduction of fine over $10,000 must come to the council, or under $10,000 can be forgiven by Blight Review.
Yep, and, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
And with that, excuse me, I have a cold. So, there was a ordinance, and I wish I had all of my documents with me, for Blight Review Committee, when it was originally established, I believe it was in 2019 that there was an ordinance that stated the Blight Review Committee can waive up to $10,000 in fines, anything else would have to go to town council. So I believe that the verbiage is out there, it's in a resolution, it's just not included in the ordinance. Again, we were keeping the, yeah, it's in, I don't know how.
Okay. Okay, you're good with that? Okay, I just didn't see it here, resolution or, I mean, okay, two separate pieces of paper.
For Blight for you, if you'd like, on Thursday.
What's that?
I'll bring that resolution to you on Blight, or Blight on Thursday.
And I, that's all I have for right now, so I'd like to let John go, because John was on Blight with me, if you have anything, John, this is your opinion now, so.
So, thank you. On, didn't we agree to hold off on, I'm going, Section 14-187? Didn't we talk about eliminating that whole section with the tax freeze agreement?
It was discussed, and then I believe everyone agreed to leave it on there and see if anyone would talk about it at the public hearing, and.
I put a big X through the whole thing, I just, I didn't even think about it. Yes, we agreed to eliminate the whole thing. It's gone. Good catch, John.
So, the other, the other thing, so I don't agree with some of the, some of the changes being proposed, but I want to go back to Section 14-172, the very first page. The idea that Blight only exists when it's visible from a public way, and this is something that we talked about, and we asked the community to sort of weigh in on. And, so, you know, this is really the issue. If you're sitting in your backyard, right, and you're looking in your neighbor's yard, and there's, I'm just going to make this up, you know, four cars on stilts that have been rusting there for years, is that Blight, and should that be considered part of this ordinance? I totally agree with the mayor's position that, you know, somebody who is on the second floor of their house, looking for houses down in their neighbor's backyard, that's a different, that's a different story. And so, you know, I would, I really would like us to consider changing that to conditions that are visible from, or on the ground, from, visible from a public way, or on the ground floor of an abutting property. So if you're in your backyard, and it is the houses on either side of you, you should be able, that, you should be able to complain about those things in the backyard. I don't think that Blight only exists in your front yard, or when you can see it from the sidewalk. If you're a homeowner, Blight is all around you, and you should be able to enjoy your entire yard, not just the front and what people can see. So, I would like to, I'm going to propose an amendment to change that. I don't have a problem with the town may hire more than one property maintenance inspector, that's a budget issue. We can fund or not fund positions, but if we want, if we want to fund more positions or temporarily fund positions, this gives us the authority and the ability to do that. If we choose not to, it's a budget question, not, we're not limiting ourselves by the, by the ordinance itself. And, you know, I, this is the other, the last thing that we really disagree on. I honestly think, and you heard residents complain about this when they were here, offering their opinion, if the town sees a blighted property, they should be able to address it, not wait for somebody to actually complain. And that was said by, I think, two or three people who came, you know, it's a limited sample size, but of the people who came to talk about this, people are upset that we're not doing anything, we're not taking affirmative action on Blight when we see it. And I think that it is important that we, we think about giving ourselves the ability to do that. I know we don't agree on this point, but I respect it, but I would ask us to consider it, and those are my only comments.
That's why I figured you and I would go first, so everybody sees, you know, this is a situation, I also heard the residents, the three residents that came and spoke, and I will say this to all the residents watching, every one of you out there elected us, and if you don't want to get in a confrontation with your neighbor, that's what our job is. Call your sitting council member, or district, or at large, or anybody, and we can take care of it for you, if you're that concerned about your neighbor. But if your neighbor doesn't have enough respect for you to cut their lawn or clean up their yard, why are you concerned about hurting their feelings when you make a complaint about it? I don't understand that. I mean, it goes both ways, so, John, thank you, we spent a lot of time on this. Go ahead.
Yeah, if you don't, so.
Go ahead.
You know, I think part of the problem, and we've seen some really extreme situations, and they are the toughest situations, where you have police activity going on next door to, you know, older couples. where you have police activity going on next door to, you know, older couples, and there's a lot of nefarious behavior going on. You're not going to call and file a blight complaint against those people. It's, it is threatening to those folks, you know. And I just think if this is brought to the town's attention through a police call or whatever it is, the town should have the ability to take action. You know, I'm not gonna, look, that's just, that's how I see it. I respect, you know, the difference of opinion. And you're right, people can call anytime, and they have, complaining about these circumstances, and that is part of our job. But I also think that, you know, it's also not our job to be driving the neighborhoods policing things, I think.
Right, but a neighbor who has an issue.
Yeah.
Or a police officer who goes to a home and sees a situation, they can make a complaint. It just won't be anonymous. I mean, EMS, if they go into a house that has hoarding conditions, I'm sure they're contacting somebody about this. They're not just going to turn the cheek, so.
I'm just asking if this gives them the right to do that, the authority to do that? Because by taking that out, that it has, that the town can't do this on its own, take affirmative action.
No, it's just, it can't be anonymous.
Got it.
Anybody can make a complaint.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lori.
Thank you. Councilor Santinella, your first point, talking about, say, your neighbor's yard, and there's two cars in the yard, and you're the only one that can see it, and you can't even sit out back because you're looking at it. Instead of making it an ordinance, couldn't we just leave it open and make it situational? Because there's so many stories. I mean, I served on this committee for years, and many times there's a story. Somebody has left those cars there for 10 years. Another time, there's two cars there, and there was a loss in the family, and they just inherited these cars, and they're trying to figure out what to do with it. So there's always a story. And if, and if you leave it open, then the committee at hand would decide how it should be handled instead of just making an ordinance solid. That's just my only comment. Bob?
Oh.
So I guess the, the whole point is it's, it's, we can't address it if it's not in the description. So yes, we've seen all kinds of, and heard all kinds of stories. That is true, and there's a lot of extreme circumstances, which is why we have a blight committee. But my, the point is, if you don't allow for blight to exist on a part of somebody's yard, then it never gets to the point where it becomes addressable by the committee. Because this is saying it's limited only if you can see it from a public way. So in that circumstance, no one would ever be able to file a complaint about somebody's backyard because it's not visible from a public way. Then, and you never get a chance to hear what the story is, whether it's valid or not. In the meantime, those residents on both sides are not, are living, having to sort of look at those situations, so.
You good? Bob?
All right, there's a whole bunch of stuff here, and after Ken saying that we threw everything to this, I'm hoping we table this, because there seems to be a lot. And I have a whole bunch of stuff, too. We haven't resolved anything that John's side is saying here. So are we just going to keep hammering away at all these things, or?
It's up to you guys, however you'd like to.
Yeah, I'll table it.
Well, I think we should give you some direction.
Give you some, I'll continue with a couple of things on here, I know Mike has more, too. But even going back to G here on 172, about the vehicles being parked in a legal parking space or driveway. It says nothing about how long, how many days this has been. I mean, you could park a car that broke down for a day, and somebody can blight you. So it's open-ended, again, when you put it in writing, it scares me that it can be construed all different kinds of ways. So that one concerns me. I also see that we raised the fee from minimum 75 to 100. Yeah, that was, that was G on 172.
172G.
G, yep.
And when we're making these notations, so what would you like us to do? Oh, to take them, take them out? Okay.
Yeah, unless you have suggested language, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, because we haven't gone over it, days or it's.
Yeah, because G could be vehicles that are not parked in a legal parking space or driveway for more than 30 days or something, or less than, whatever.
I would just, I mean, how do you even police that?
I know.
That's what I'm saying, take it out.
Yeah, who's putting the counter on it?
I mean, look, we got to have some reason to build it, how we're going to police this stuff.
And so we have, I know for windows, there's, windows and doors can be boarded for a period up to 90 days. So normally how that works, just for your information, our property maintenance inspector goes out, takes a picture when she gets the complaint, and then technically sets a timer for 90 days. So just for your information. But yeah, so we can remove G.
Just to add, this particular item about vehicles being parked is a pretty common complaint that we get. People saying that cars parked all over the property, et cetera. So this was an attempt at trying to fix that from the Blight Committee.
I'm in favor of more discussion on that. I understand the problem of the blight on that side, but where it's parked matters. There's a whole, there's a whole different topic on that. Also, we went from 75 to $100. I know I've disagreed with the mayor on this, and then it goes to $20,000, and we're already going after the house or the property in fines on 180 days. So we've had this discussion back and forth, and we disagree vehemently on this. I'd like to see that raised a little bit, just, that's my, and I'm just suggesting a year.
Councilor Henderson, can I just respond?
Sure, absolutely.
Some background on that. So we really did, the problem that we're having is that these fines are accruing over such a long period of time before anything is getting done. And then we have people coming to the Blight Committee with hundreds of thousands of dollars or tens of thousands of dollars of fines that they aren't really aware of, right? In some cases, because some people don't even know these things are going on, or it's difficult for them to resolve. There's a whole, there's so many issues. The concern that we had, and that we're trying to address here, is how long do you let it go on before you start to elevate the level of, I don't know, enforcement of this? So that you get the homeowner to come to the table, right, and to remedy the problem? And so we wanted to make that happen sooner rather than later, for two reasons. One, it gives the homeowner a chance, right, with a reasonable, and allows us to reasonably adjust their fines. And two, it, this is as much about the people who live around these properties as it is about the property owner of the blighted property. Because I think Ken and I honestly are more concerned about the, everybody else who maintains their property, lives in their house, keeps everything up, having to live next door to a house where that's not happening. And, you know, more times than not, these are properties that are not owner-occupied, and, you know, it's not the resident that's necessarily the issue. It's the homeowner, the property owner, who is not having to deal with this at all. And so that's, I just wanted to give you some background.
We should have some blight to it, and that was Ken's argument, and I totally agree with that. I just, when you put it in writing that you're foreclosing on somebody's house after 180 days, it's a scary thing to put in a document, that's in an ordinance. I understand, and you bring up the bank thing, and you can't separate that legally, I'm sure you can't.
Right, so I want to say one more thing, along with John, because of the things we don't agree on, this we do. Kristi, to her credit, has done everything humanly possible to get some of these people to come in and just talk to the town, address the fines. Let's resolve this situation. They blow her off, they don't care, they don't care. But those same people, when they got their foreclosure notice, they're on the phone in two seconds flat with her. They come in, they sit down, either Blight Review comes up with a resolution to reduce the fines, which comes to this body, or foreclose on the property, which also comes to this body. So it's more of a tool to let people know, we're done, okay? The banks, if we go a year, think of the yard that can go one year without being maintained. And in, in 2005 through 2010, the issues we had with the foreclosures in this town, with every one of our constituents calling us, screaming at us that we're not doing anything about this blighted property that's next door to them. We had nothing. What can we do? As it is now, I know I've gotten them, well, I called two weeks ago, and nothing's done. Well, it takes 30 days just for the notice to go active. So, I mean, so you've got, you've got the time you're worried about, but then what about all the time before that to even get to that point? Then they still, and every single person who's come in here, even remotely interested, has gotten their fines reduced, we've come up with a resolution. It's the people who don't. They don't care, they're abandoned properties, nobody owns. We've got a house that's going to be coming, that the parents died, the kids don't want the house. There's thousands and thousands of dollars in blighted fines on it. It's coming to us, or it already came to us. You know the one I'm talking about?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so what do you do? There's, nobody cares, nobody wants the house. And these neighbors have lived around this house for years and years. And there's junk cars in the driveway, you know the house I'm talking about. So we have no choice, but let's get the foreclosure going. And in this particular case, we could wait 20 years. It's not going to change anything.
I understand the explanation, that's why I wanted to get it out there, so I'm just putting it out there.
Is it about Bob's?
Oh, if, yeah, if you want to continue.
If it's about what Bob's talking about, go ahead. You have your own questions. Okay.
Can I make a motion, the table is?
You want to see this?
Well, I'm just throwing, you can, I can't stop you, but we're in the discussion now. I don't know why we would stop.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, hold on. Is this about Bob's?
Bob's got the floor.
Are you about this?
Go ahead, keep going.
Right. All right, I'm going to keep going. There's a couple here. So 1776. Puts, it says, state of the, state that the town, its employees, its designated agents and/or contractors may enter the premises to remediate exterior blighted conditions. And that, premises could mean inside or outside. I'm just, I know it says premises, where I'm assuming it's going to be exterior, but it does say you can enter the premises, so I'm worried that, does that mean you can enter a household?
I'm sorry, what number?
Premises. 177 number six. Oh, 177.
Yeah. So that refers to cleaning liens, let me, so blighted premises, I believe we have premises defined.
Guess I didn't see that page.
But yeah.
Means any real property, including, among other things, any dwelling buildings. Yeah, so.
It's not a cleaning lien.
Yeah, so that, that should be removed. So it should be technically not premises.
Well, we can get that word.
Yeah.
We'll figure out what that word is.
Property or grounds, into the grounds.
Grounds, we might have to add an extra definition, but yeah.
That was what was in the, I believe, the ordinance before, so thank you for catching that.
Good catch, Bob, good catch. I'm glad I told you about it.
Oh, yeah, I guess, 14-190, applicability. It doesn't mention, doesn't mention town-owned property at all in this, which also should be blighted, could be blighted, am I correct?
I believe under, under the statute, open space, there's a whole list of things that is exempt. State property, it's.
So applicability is just privately owned? That's the only thing that's going to be applicable to this blighted or?
Well, I think it's everything that's not covered under the state statute, which there were certain things on that I didn't like, but.
We can confirm that, but I believe you're right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor is always right, I guess.
No, Mr. Mayor spent a lot of time with John and them. Two years we've been working on this? You're all set, Bob?
Yeah.
Mike?
So do we even need that section, since we're stating in the first paragraph, in the first, I mean, it seems to be duplicative.
That was an addition by Blight Review.
Section C under 14-171C, doesn't that, it's stated purpose? Or are we stating it in applicability?
The applicability really is most critical in the second-to-last line. Complaints is required whether or not such buildings have been constructed, altered, or repaired before or after the enactment of this article. Basically, somebody could come in and say, well, my house has been like this since 30 years ago. I don't have to follow for this. That's really the critical component of that applicability.
So.
I know what you mean.
Page under, under 170, I'll be quick, 14-172 graffiti, I want that whole thing pulled out. I mean, when the definition of unauthorized.
Where are you talking, I meant 172, is it 12?
It's on the bottom, I don't know, it's not in a section, it's on the bottom under, it's a red, it's under the.
Do you want the definition removed?
I want it all, it shouldn't, graffiti shouldn't be a part of this, it should be a planning and zoning. The unauthorized word bothers me, right, because then it says the council or the governing bodies, only way, only, only group that can say what is graffiti and what isn't graffiti? That's a very slippery slope when it comes, in my opinion, to the first.
Do you want to remove graffiti altogether?
I want to remove graffiti from the whole thing.
Okay.
Bottom have a conversation real quick.
Right, on that, how do you address when somebody tags something? Like Porter and Chester got tagged, and it was graffiti. And the town, through blight, went in and addressed it because it was graffiti. I understand your concern, and I agree with you, Mike. Like the mural down here is considered graffiti. Whether you like it or not, we have a sign regulation in town that says for certain square footage of a building, the signs cannot exceed the certain square inches. So how does a mural supersede a sign regulation, but it's not classified as graffiti? And what Mike, and if somebody put up a huge, welcome President Trump, you know, with him making a muscle or whatever, it's going to offend people, just like a Black Lives Matter. It's no different than the flag policy. And we should not be the judge or jury of what's considered graffiti or what's considered art. Anything that's tagged on a building that does not get a sign permit through the town of Enfield should be considered graffiti, and it's not acceptable.
So modifying the definition might be.
No, it's saying unauthorized writing slogan. I mean, someone could have, could have something hanging from their home that's unauthorized, which means the council didn't approve it or somebody. That word unauthorized is dangerous, in my opinion. So look, I don't want to go into people's homes because they have a flag up, or, look, if someone really has graffiti on their house, I mean.
And this is more so, yeah, commercial bill, and then 100% I understand.
It says public and private, but private is a home, private is a home. I'm sorry, it didn't say commercial, it says private. So maybe change the word to commercial?
All right, let's think, we'll make a note, we hear what you're talking about.
Also, too, on, sorry, going up on 172C, dead, decayed, deceased, or damaged trees. Doesn't that have to be, doesn't the arborist have to have a, so I know he left our arborist, but I know, it's a very, that's a very touchy subject. And I always thought he had, or he or she, whoever it could be, has to sign off before someone goes knock down a tree.
So, and this is something I brought up with Blight Review at the very beginning. Oh, sorry, I don't want to speak, do you?
No.
Okay, sorry.
This is a back and forth, Kristi.
Yeah, so with the tree situation, because currently how it stands now is, let's say, the person living at 1 Main Street calls in and says, hey, my neighbor at 3 Main Street, their trees are going to fall on their pool. So technically, our property management inspector attempts to contact the person living at 3 Main Street. And if they can't get, she can't get in contact, she sends them a letter saying, hey, contact us, you're in violation. And then at that point, they are then responsible for providing, or providing a letter from the arborist saying, oh, no, this is not dead. Or they come out and say, oh, no, this is definitely dead. Or they come out and say, oh, no, this is definitely dead. You have to get it removed. So, I personally wanted to put in the ordinance something with an arborist.
Right, because I don't want something to get dinged. What if the arborist is on, again, could be on leave, could be on leave, and yet we don't have an arborist to go out, and now the person's getting dinged with $75 a day, or $100 a day, whatever we're doing.
Yeah, and...
I'm just saying, it's, and I know it's happened, because I know there's been some issues when we haven't been able to inspect the tree, and folks get really upset about it. And then if it gets whatever trimmed or knocked down, well, where is the arborist? I've been involved in some of those situations, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, I...
So, I think, what happens if the homeowner don't allow them on the property to inspect the tree?
Yeah, it's fair.
And that's where it comes back to whether it's from a public way, if that stays at that, and you can't see it from the road. So, it's a tricky situation, so...
I mean, they're responsible with their homeowner's insurance, so I mean...
That is not true. That is not true. A tree just fell on a house on Louise Drive. It took out fences, it hit the house and everything, and it came from the neighbor's yard. And the insurance company clearly said, did you make a complaint to the town? And did the town do anything about it? And if you did not make that complaint, the other, the homeowner who owns the tree is not responsible for the damage to your property. This just happened.
Always where the damage lies, in insurance.
That was horrendous for those people.
But so, I think that one we need to clean up. But then we go to section 114177, section B, and again, this is language. I understand what you're trying to say. I'm sorry, the word demand, I'm sorry, should not be in any ordinance.
Do you mind saying it again, or which word?
Section B, 114177.
Section B.
We need to find a better way of saying it. I understand what you're trying to say. I'm sorry, demand, the government is demanding, I mean, let's, can we maybe remediate? Just find a little, I mean, I know you saying the ordinance doesn't have to be nice, but the word demand, I think, is a bit over the top, in my opinion.
Oh, B, okay.
Yeah, different word, different way of saying it. I'm not against the B. I understand what you're trying to say, it's just, but...
Might be a legal word.
All right, we'll make a note there. Yeah, you see what I'm saying? It's a bit harsh.
I'm not sure what legal word was there, or how we, because I see that we crossed it out later. Maybe I was trying to reuse those same words.
You took it out.
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to be real quick, section 14181. So, it does go to the, this is currently happening where it gets filed with the Superior Court? I didn't think it did.
So, it doesn't, it can, but it doesn't at this point. It's more so it goes through our process. We do a notice of assessment after 30 days, then we lean the property in our land records. So, I've seen some in the past go to the clerk, but it's...
Do we really need that section? That's all I'm asking.
We could question it. We can, I'll circle it.
And we'll make sure that that is, whether or not that's a requirement from a state level, that may be a state requirement.
I know it's not, it seems, like you said, I don't remember it going that far. I'm trying to be quick.
Yeah. It hasn't passed, but...
Yeah. No, go right ahead, sorry, I'm not trying to cut you off.
No, no worries.
No, go through this, Mike, because let them make the change. I want to take care of this tonight, so they can come back with it cleaned up, and we can...
All right, I'm okay with that, I guess. So, I had one other question, I apologize, where is it? Shoot, I lost my train of thought. Oh, dumb question. So, this is doing a good job of documenting a process. Say, again, we, someone clean, you know, there's violation, they clean up their property, and I'm not saying it has to be in here, but I know this has happened as well. So, you clean up your property. You do, we go out and inspect, you're no longer, you're compliant, but your neighbors keep calling on you. Do we have a nuisance? Does we have, do we have a separate nuisance?
We do not. We just make it very clear that it's no longer in violation.
All right, and we're...
Yeah, and then we, I haven't experienced that. I can definitely talk to Mariella to see.
No, I'm just curious. I know it's happened in the past.
She's been good with letting them know, this is the ordinance, it is no longer in violation.
All right, because I am not in favor, I'm going to be, I'm not in favor. I understand Counselor Santinello's point. I don't care what's in my neighbor's backyard. I don't want, I'm sorry, at some point, I don't care. I understand it, but I'm sorry, for me, this over, my belief in government where it oversteps government's bounds, you know, I understand if you don't have a good neighbor, I know it stinks, but sorry, it should be from a public way, it should be from the street where you can see it. And certainly, I don't want someone in an upper house looking over someone's property. And, I mean, so if you're going to do that, then your name should be on a complaint, right? Sorry, you should be able to know who your accuser is. So, if you want to have that authority, you should be able to put your name on it. Sorry, I mean, you can't have it always.
And along with that, without a name, you could have anonymous complaints again and again and again. And who do you file a harassment suit against? If Mike keeps calling on Bob, and Bob fixed the problem a month ago, Bob can go to the police and say, this is clearly harassment, and the town's got the complaint, so...
No, I agree, so I, look, I understand there's good intentions here, but sorry, I can be abused quickly, and I just don't want the town, and we've had these conversations before where the town shouldn't be engaged in a neighbor versus a neighbor complaint. The more, sometimes the more teeth you put into something, the more we're going to be engaged in neighbor versus neighbor complaints. So, I'm just saying, it's a balance. This is good work. I mean, again, this has always been, in my view, as long as we're always in the mode of getting someone compliant. That's the way, I've always viewed this, when we've done this for the last 10, 15 years. Again, we want them to live in their home and be a good neighbor. I mean, it's that simple. That's, for me, the end goal. I don't care about the fines, I don't care about, I just want them to be a good neighbor, everyone's happy, everyone's property values are good, and you folks aren't getting called every, because we're getting called, hey, their door is open today, you know, or they left their trash can somewhere. I mean, it gets to a point where it's just, it's not manageable. Thank you, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with new changes to this policy? None. All right, John?
So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to table this for this meeting, give staff an opportunity to come back, make the corrections that we've discussed here, and then bring this back to the next meeting for us to approve.
I agree with you, but I think we need to let the staff know the consensus on what, because I know you and I disagree on certain things, what do the rest of them feel? So, let's give them a consensus, like anonymous complaints. Do we believe they should be anonymous, or should somebody have to put their name to it?
So, what I was going to suggest is, let staff compile a list of all of the changes that they've heard tonight. They can provide us with a list of those, and then we, through caucus, can go ahead and see where we are on each of those, and then build them back in for when we come back to the next...
I thought that's what we just did.
No, we don't have consensus on each one, so I'm just saying...
That's, we could do this right now, and, I mean, it's pretty clear what direction this is going to go in.
Well, well, yes, I just think, you know, we, you know, if we have, if we are able to get a, if we are able to kind of do this through a roster and then kind of build consensus from the rest, we can do that. Otherwise, we can just do what you guys want to do. Because I don't...
Right, I understand, John, but you have also been trying to push this, along with me.
No, no.
So, all we're doing now is, we're just saying, okay, now just take everything we talk about and make a list. Well, we just went through everything, so we can just answer quickly, is there consensus to do anonymous complaints? Yes or no?
No.
No, there's no consensus, so it has to be somebody. Are we in consensus at $20,000, the town may start a foreclosure with council approval?
As long as we're may in council, yes.
And it's, it's, it says may in here.
Say it again?
The foreclosure may start at 20,000.
So, we may serve written notice?
Yep. But all foreclosures have to be approved by the council, right, Christie?
So, we, I don't believe we had that specifically in there. That was more so for Blight, going through Blight Review and then being referred to Town Council. So, I don't know if we ever established that, if it was specifically through, actually, I would assume, I'm trying to think on... Yeah.
Right, that's, and I'm making sure it has, right, they're saying it's not in this ordinance. Right, right. So, maybe just with council approval, a Blight, a foreclosure action could start.
Just in case Christie's not here.
Right.
She's the town manager, and somebody else does it.
Yeah. A public right-of-way, Blight can only be from a public right-of-way. We're removing the section of hiring more employees. Yep, we have consensus on that. Who was taking the notes here?
Mr. Mayor, you stepped out whenever there was a conversation about removing vehicles that are not parked on a legal parking space or driveway.
Who brought that up? If somebody has a car...
I believe it was me, and I brought it up for how many days? What are we talking about?
Well, if somebody has a car parked in their backyard and you can't see it from a public right-of-way, it's got nothing to do with Blight.
That's what we're saying, we're saying remove section G.
Oh, remove it.
G.
Yeah. I know that...
172G.
The car issue was one that you had some concerns about.
Vehicles that are not parked in a legal parking space or driveway.
No, remove it. Remove it. I, what it should say, is it like a boat? You cannot park a boat beyond the front line of your home. It has to be behind the front of your house. I think motor vehicles should be the same thing, unless parked in a designated parking spot like a driveway. Does that make sense? So, that way, we don't have somebody with abandoned cars parked in their front?
I know. If you remove it, like suggested, you're not going to be happy, because that's going to be gone.
Right. Well, I didn't say remove it.
Yes, you just did, didn't you?
Yes, you just did.
Did I?
Yes, you did. You just said remove it.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, you did say remove it, but, because I just crossed it out.
Vehicles that are not parked in a legal parking space or driveway must be parked behind the front line of the house, like a boat.
Okay.
And that's our zoning regulations, too.
You just had me cross it out, because you said remove it.
So, we need to add that addition to it. If you can check on that consensus, just before we...
So, eliminate G?
No, we're keeping that, but saying that if it's not parked in those, it has to be behind the front line of the house.
So, you could park it on your side yard or in your backyard?
Okay, so pretty much, so how it was before?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, I think what you had, it's buried in there somewhere.
Yeah, somewhere, right, sounds good. Okay, we did something here with trees. Go up to B, shrubs, hedges, plants, neglected, growing. We wanted something there with trees, so the tree...
It was the deputy mayor, actually, letter C.
It was C, okay, all right, I knew it was one of them. So, is that wording regarding...
The arborist.
Right, and I think that was the discussion that we had of whose responsibility is it to get the arborist out? Is it the person complaining, or the person who owns the property? So, yeah. If the person owns a property, I mean, you can't hire somebody to go on someone's property with their tree. Exactly. So technically, we would have to go through the notice of violation first, and then have them, so we just have to make it clear...
This being here, this letter C says, if you are believed to have dead, decayed, diseased, et cetera, then it is considered blight. And therefore, we can start a process which then would bring in the arborist. So, that's why that is in there.
Okay.
Just to be clear on that.
And then graffiti, we're taking that all out?
Yeah, graffiti.
So, E?
No, 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 down here, lower, this graffiti, it's...
The last line there for graffiti that offended Mike. So, that is the definition?
That's definition of graffiti.
Okay, so we're not taking it out? That's just a definition.
We need to change the definition.
Change the definition. And actually, what I'll do is, I think, you know, Christie and I, we can go up and talk with Lori and get some of the sign code information in there, because I get where you're going at with the sign relevance.
Sorry, someone could say...
If it's outside of the signs, then that is something different, so that's what I want to get to.
Right, because you could paint Enfield Town Hall all over the side of this building and say it's a sign, but it doesn't meet the sign regulation. Then you say, it's a mural. No, it's not. And that's where, and I agree with him on this, it's, I mean, graffiti's graffiti. And I don't care what the mural is, how beautiful it is or not. Inside a building, have at it, but outside...
Okay, 177, number six, we're taking the word premises out and putting grounds in or something like that. Oh, part of the premises? Right, we're looking into a better word.
I just want to make sure...
All right, I'm just going through what I have.
Okay, so we got those, too.
178. Oh, the demand, yes, demand.
Yeah, yeah.
So, should we just go back to state?
Well, let's take a look, because the word demand was in there, and that may be something that's coming from the state, yeah, I'm not 100% certain of where those, that language may have come from.
Are you demanding they take it out, Bob?
Well, we'll see if there's a nicer way to say that.
Under 178, under enforcement, I wrote down, we need better communication, and violators need to know that they have to have the reinspection.
Yeah, the reinspection thing. This is where we were talking about requiring, having them notify us that it needs to be reinspected.
And whether it's that...
Right, you were going to check with the attorney.
Yeah.
But that's got to be some sort of a language in there to notify.
And, I mean, there could be in state statute, there could be this language already included, and that's why a lot of it, we kind of condense, so we just have to look back into it.
Right, yep, all right.
179 penalty for violation, we're okay with it going up to $100?
Can I, one question? If you say it's money doesn't get people to Christie's office, what's the 75 to 100 going to do?
Get you there faster, to the 20,000?
Are you saying they don't go there until you...
File a notice of foreclosure.
Exactly. So, you're just trying to get quicker to the foreclosure, get them quicker to the 180 days or the 20,000?
We're trying to get the homeowners to fix their properties without fines, without foreclosures, but sending a notice. And if you heard how many times people say, I never got any notices, but you got that foreclosure notice?
I understand, but you're not explaining why...
We're talking 75 to 100.
You're telling me why the reason for, that's all, it's 180 days to get it to the...
The math, the math works a little better, that's all.
And I believe, and it could have been other towns as well, don't hold me back.
Other towns.
Right, our Blight fine was a lot lower.
If you all feel that it's 75's fine, whatever, but it was easier math.
So, we're okay with that, they aren't changing it?
They aren't changing it.
I think our whole, all our goals is to get these properties cleaned up. I mean, it's not to take.
I agree, though, when you put it in writing, it doesn't say that. And you explain that, I get it. When you're not here, Mr. Mayor, somebody else may determine it a different way.
Yeah.
So, putting it on.
181, notice of penalty assessment, you're checking in with that as far as...
Yeah, we got to confirm that.
182B, any reduction in fine over 10,000 to Town Council? I guess you said that it's in policy, so that doesn't need to be spelled out here.
Correct.
Okay, just asking. Okay. Going down to 184, the last one, with council approval.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to add it.
Yeah, we need to make sure of that.
With council approval on that, okay. This is all coming out, section 187, and I've got nothing under 88, 89, or 90.
Right.
And then we're leaving.
All right, and we have consensus on all of that?
And then we can bring it back and we'll relook at it.
Yep.
At least that way you guys can kind of clean it up, get it to us for the next meeting, and we can get it passed, because I know blight...
It's likely we'll, we'll run it past Town Attorney again, just to make sure nothing's gone sideways in there somehow. So it would be nice to have it by next meeting, but I don't want to promise that for 100%.
Okay.
I want to give them enough time as holidays and all that sort of thing.
Can I just ask one other question? If something else should come up, and John mentioned going to caucus, just, if something else that we possibly missed, because there is a lot here, how do we address it, or do we...
Next meeting, once we have the updated document. Because without consensus of the council, Jim may not like something, but he's outvoted. He can't, so it's got to be public.
I agree. Thank you for the answer.
Yep. All right, so I'll entertain the motion to table, John?
Second.
No, second.
Second.
All in favor of tabling? Thank you, Kristi and Aaron. I appreciate you staying.
Have a lovely evening.
You, too. What's left of it.
Yeah, I know. Oh, and you're just hanging out, just wait.
There's another item coming in.
Oh, okay.
Resolution to set the public hearing for adoption of tobacco, of the use of tobacco, cannabis-type products ordinance. The town would like to ensure that all land, streets, sidewalk, buildings, park, playground, recreation area, athletic facility, trail, lake, or area of assembly owned, leased, or controlled by the town of Enfield be a family-friendly area free of secondhand smoke and vapor of tobacco, nicotine, or cannabis products. There is no budget impact. Recommendation is the council approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council holds a public hearing for all interested citizens to comment on the use of tobacco and cannabis-type products ordinance on December 16, 2024, at 6:45 PM here in the Town Council chambers. Date prepared 11/25/2024, prepared by the Town Manager's Office.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Can I have a question? Do we have a discussion on this? Because I wanted to bring up dispensaries and cultivators.
Well, you'll have a, we just said a public hearing. That'll be next meeting, if it's on the agenda to move. But just the public hearing is, all right. Next is a resolution to settle... Oh, Jesus, thank you, John. Roll call, please.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
And Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Resolution to settle property tax assessment appeal for the Enfield Square Mall properties. Recommendation is the Town Council approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the interim Town Attorney or his designee to settle the outstanding tax assessment appeal in the following action. Enfield Square Realty LLC versus the town of Enfield, docket number HHB-CV-22-6073655S, as follows. The fair market value for the Outback Steakhouse and the Subway Starbucks properties will remain unchanged at $1,374,800 and $1,031,100, respectively, and the combined fair market value of the remaining six properties, consisting of Sears Automotive, Sears Department Stores, Cinemark Movie Theaters, Macy's Men's Store, former JCPenney's, Macy's Women's Store, former Filene's, and the main mall be reduced to $17 million. Date prepared 11/19/2024, prepared by Office of the Town Attorney.